This is the portion of the meeting where we hear from members of the public on topics that are on the agenda and not on the agenda. Keep in mind, we have a CVE discussion tonight. You are welcome to comment on that now. You are welcome to wait and hear the presentation first. It is up to you. You can talk about anything that's concerning you. We will do that now. So if you have anything to share, you can come up to this table right here on your left and share your name and whatever you're thinking. If there's no one in the room, I'll look online to see if anybody has anything they want to share. Not seeing anyone in the room or online, so we will move on to business item 5A, Communication and Strategic Initiatives Director Department Head Brief. Welcome, Ashley.
Hello.
Hello.
Thanks for having me tonight. So tonight, I'm just going to do a brief discussion on some of the things that has been taking place in the Communications Department over the past six months and a little bit longer. So first off, you know, I had this little project that you might have heard of, the Community Vision and Strategic Initiatives, or Strategic Action Plan. This is something that we started back in September, and we hired Future IQ to help us out with this process. It has been a big project of community engagement. We reached out multiple times with surveys. We had some community focus groups, an open house. We had a two-day think tank workshop. So lots of community engagement to get people excited and knowledgeable about this project and to get their opinion about the future for the city in the next five, 10, 20 years. We did present a final draft to the council at the last council meeting, and that draft is still as a draft right now. We are now, we've came up with six strategic pillars, 18 action items, and those action items are something that we're prioritizing right now. Once we have that final prioritization of those 18 action items, we'll bring that back to the council for you guys' approval of the final report and those action items. Then we'll begin working on our department work plans, and I'll go a little bit into that when we go to our next steps for the six months that I'm looking forward to. But I do want to thank our steering committee that helped out with this process. We had members of our committees, some of our city council members, a member of the Voices for Inclusion in Essex and Westford, and then some of our staff. And they were tremendous help to me throughout this project, whether that was boots on the ground, taking surveys around, taking flyers around, helping out with the different events, and also helping to get where we are with this draft project. The next thing I'm going to talk about is our employee newsletter that the Human Resources Director and I started back in January. This is just a great opportunity for us to do some internal communications with our staff. We do things like do a staff spotlight. We highlight all of our new employees that we have hired throughout the city. Then we try to give them some great tips and tricks for work-life balance or for beating the heat this past one. And then we just provide information that they need to know. So when we have insurance, it's time to renew your insurance. When it's time to do last-minute financial stuff that the finance team has with end-of-year, we try to give them reminders about that information. So it's been a good start to some great employee communication. We also started Junction City News actually a year ago. Regina and I just did our last episode this past Monday. This is a great partnership that we have with Town Meeting TV. It's a 30-minute show that we do on the fourth Monday of every month, and it's a great way for us to dive deeper into some of the big projects and activities going on with the city. So we've done different projects like the Land Development Code and the Strategic Planning Process and the Budget. We've had some department heads come on and talk about their department. We've had the Fire Department on, and then we've also had the Tree Advisory Committee that's came on and talked about their committee. And then we've just talked about big projects. So we had Chelsea on to talk about what not to flush. We had CSWD come on and talk about composting. So it's been a great way for us to dive deeper into some big topics and some educational opportunities that we want to provide our residents. So if you haven't checked out Junction City News, you can look at all of our episodes. They are on our website under News and Initiatives, Junction City News. They're all listed there, and I encourage you to check that out. We also did some bigger engagement with the budget this year. We did department head videos where they worked, walked through their budgets this year, so we provided that information out to the community. We also started back up the community meal, which was a big hit, I think, and I'm looking forward to growing that and having more people to come to that and having more of our staff and committees involved in that as well. And then, of course, I do the annual report and newsletter as well. That's something that goes on every year, but something that happened in the past six months. We're also in the committee renewal. Thank you for everyone who is joining a committee or returning back to a committee. So you guys will be interviewing those today, but that's part of my department is to get those committees appointed and get them all up to date within the city. I also manage those lists, and I want to shout out to Joanne, who's our admin assistant. She's been helping me out with this process this year and has been a tremendous help for me with this process. I also helped out the Tree Advisory Committee quite a bit this past six months. I helped out with their Tree City USA application. I'm also managing their Emerald Ashbore grant. And then we did some publicity around some of the activities and events that they had going on. So I've been enjoying working with the Tree Advisory Committee the past six months. We also took over Green Up Day in my department. That was something that the Rect Department did previously, so this was my first year having that underneath my department. It was a learning experience this year, so hopefully we'll be growing that program. I'd like to see some more staff and maybe committee involvement within Green Up Day. One of the highlights of Green Up Day for me was, though, I did get to talk to an Essex High School class about Green Up Day, which was a lot of fun, to just get out and talk to some kids. And then finally, some policy updates. That's been another thing that I've been helping out with Regina and the council, most recently with the Communication and Meeting Policy, and it'll be something that'll continue to help out as we move forward in updating all of our policies. So what I'm looking forward to, as I mentioned, we're going to be doing departmental work plans. It's something that I recently presented to all the department heads. They will be building these work plans along with the budgets, and it's something that I'll be setting up meetings with each of them to work through their work plans. So more to come on that as we move forward with that ending of the strategic plan and moving forward with how we're going to implement the strategic plan. The great thing about the development of the work plans, though, is we're really trying to take our strategic plan, the work that we're already doing, and the budget, and combine it all together so that we have a really great document that we can work off of, and we can all see what we're all doing, and we can all have a good idea. You guys can have a good idea of what we're doing. The rest of the team can have a good idea, and how can we work together to increase the services that we have within the city. We're also going to be starting a community newsletter. This will be a monthly newsletter, and we're still working out what that exactly will look like. But I'm very excited to provide another avenue for people to get information that the city has and we're putting out, and I hope that it's beneficial, and I hope to get some feedback from the community members on what they'd like to see in that. And then finally, we will be rebranding. It's something that's been on the table, I know, but I have to go through one project at a time. So this will be my other big project that we have coming up. We'll be doing a new logo, and then we'll be updating the signs on all the entrances as you come into Essex Junction. So that is my look back and look forward, and I just want to say that I'm very excited about the direction that the city's headed, and I'm looking forward to continuing to improve communications within the city.
Thanks, Ashley.
Thanks.
Just want to thank you for your
Thank you.
Just want to thank you for your work on the strategic plan process and the steering committee and everybody that participated, but thank you for seeing that through and continuing to see that through. I'm looking forward to how that comes together. Any questions or comments for Ashley? Start in the room. Marcus?
Again, I echo the same sentiments. Thank you so much for shepherding the strategic planning process through. That was a lot of work, a lot of effort, and I really appreciate the time you put into it. One thing I did want to ask, and this is kind of a projected look forward, but again, if you think about the increased engagement that we're doing, and I'm going to ask about Front Porch Forum specifically because it has budgetary impact in comparison to the other ways that I've seen you communicate. Do you think right now with the level that we're at, because we have a certain number that you can post, you know, on a monthly basis, do you believe that right now where we're at, we can increase that engagement? Or are we going to need to invest more in that particular platform in order to do what you're hoping for in the future?
I think that we, right now, that it's underutilized. I think that we do have some staff members that aren't posting as, you know, as frequently as we could. We could, we could change that up a bit. So there is some room that we can make it to where other people could have more postings. We are limited in the number of postings. I have the most postings in the city, and then everyone else basically has two postings except for Wendy, who has more postings as well. And it's just the nature of our jobs. We are posting a lot, so that's the reason why we have more posts. But we do have other staff members that do have Front Porch Forum accounts, and we could find other ways that we could increase that. So I don't feel like we need to increase the budget quite yet, but maybe future if we get to utilizing the posts that we already have.
Awesome. Thank you. I'm pretty good at talking to Ashley. Our paths cross quite a bit.
We laughed Regina and I. She's like, you've been a lot of the times. We're here frequently. You have something to talk about, which I always have something to talk about, so.
Excellent. I know Elaine's got her hand up.
Okay.
I really just wanted to say thank you to Ashley for the work she's done, not just on the strategic planning process, but improving communications in general. That's something that we have wanted for many, many years, and it's really much appreciated, the work you're doing, Ashley. And I know there's probably tons more that could be done, but I'm really grateful for what you've been doing. I think the quality has been great, and just please keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thanks, Elaine.
Great. I appreciate the, I'm looking forward to, excuse me, the rebranding and that process and seeing if we can gather input on the logo and other things and see how that's going to play out, and really looking forward to the newsletter. And I just kind of made a note to myself, you know, it'd be interesting to see if some of the appropriate content from the employee newsletter could be repurposed for the community newsletter. It's not going to be, obviously, everything, but there might be opportunities where some of that might be interesting for the community to see who works here and what they're dealing with.
Yeah, no, I could definitely see some of that employee spotlight or some of our new employees being a part of that, especially our new employees. I think that's, you know, the big ones are usually the ones that we advertise, and I hope to do that with everybody because we have a great team.
Great. That and, oh, what was it? Oh, yeah, sorry. I had this feedback before from folks, but maybe there's opportunities too for submissions for the community newsletter if there's someone that wants to do a regular column or a regular, or maybe there's opportunities for neighborhoods to submit interesting news. But anyway, overall, we really appreciate what you've been doing.
Yeah.
So thanks for joining us tonight. I don't think there's anything else. I don't see Amber's hand up.
All right.
Any, well, don't before you go. You sat there. I know, not willingly. Is there anyone online that has anything, any comments or questions around this topic for the board at this point? I don't see any hands there. Anyone in the room? Any comments or questions on this topic? Doesn't look like it. All right, Ashley, thank you so much. Oh, sorry, Diane.
As I walk in here.
Oh, yeah, we're going to have to share the seat.
Come on, Diane, I'll share my space with you.
Watch your step.
So, for the minutes, I am Diane Clemmons. Took me 20 minutes to get here. I only allowed 10. Silly me. So you had mentioned, as I walked in, that you were looking at policies. So are you the person that's responsible for the ordinances that are online that say Village of Essex Junction and not City?
I am. And the reason why they say Village still is because we have to have the council to approve any ordinances, and that process isn't just them approving it. We have to have the, we have to put it out. We have to have a public hearing. So there's a lot more to it than just changing one little thing. And one of the things that we're going to be doing with our Governance Committee is looking at our ordinances. So we're not going to be doing lots of changes to our ordinances until that Governance Committee has had an opportunity to evaluate those ordinances and give feedback on that. And then once we have some good revisions, then we'll bring that to the council all at one point. That's the plan.
Great. Well, having spent an extended period of time with the Land Development Code and getting those revisions done, you know, when I went and I looked over the last few days, I said, why aren't these addressed? So that's my question. So thank you.
Keep in mind, they are still in effect.
Yes, yes. And as part of that rebranding, we've got a lot to change. So I will have to do basically an outline of when, how we're going to change out all of that. So some of that will cost money, and others will be easy fix of just changing the name. So to be continued.
Excellent. Thank you.
Can I just add, real quick on that note? So we have, part of the reason why we wanted to do the strategic plan is because we have quite an extensive list of things that we want to do and you all want us to do. And we have updated just a few ordinances as things have come up, but there really is a significant amount of work that needs to be done on all of them. And so, not to put you completely off the spot, Diane, because some of those may come to the Planning Commission. We'll see how some of that goes.
I recognize that they might.
Yeah.
I have a good sense of it.
Yeah, so more to come for sure.
Elaine, do you still have your hand up? Are you, is there anything else? It's okay if there's not.
No, that was a legacy.
Double check in. Okay. Thank you, Ashley. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in, Ashley.
All right, so we are going to move on to 5B. We have a number of interviews and appointments for Bike Walk Committee, Capital Review Committee, Development Review Board, Planning Commission, and the Tree Advisory Committee. So I'll just say for folks here for CVE, this could be about 50 minutes to an hour if we're brief. Just want to let folks know. Great, and we'll start right at the top. Just got to pull up this. Bike Walk Advisory Committee and David Ashay. Am I saying that right?
No, but it's
Okay. How do I say it? As someone who gets their name often mispronounced, Ashay? Awesome. Perfect. Have a seat. If you could just say your name again when you sit down.
Hi, David Ashay.
Thanks for joining us. We have all had the opportunity to read what you gave us and appreciate the answers. If you have anything you'd like to elaborate on as to why you're interested in Bike Walk?
Yeah, so I've been, I moved here from Texas about two years ago, and yeah, I just see a lot of potential in the community. I have a young son who I just took training wheels off his bike, so he's starting to bike himself. And yeah, a lot of potential here and would love to work together with the community to, you know, make it a safer place for everybody.
Excellent. Any, I'll start with Elaine and Amber online this time, because I always look at Marcus first.
Let's look safe, man.
Anything, Elaine or Amber?
They both shook their heads.
Okay, I couldn't get there in time. Sue?
Defer to Marcus?
No, 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 go ahead.
No, I've said it before as other applicants come forward, anybody that really wants to take the time out of their lives and dedicate it to their community, I very much support. It's not an easy thing to do as someone who's done it his entire adult life, so I have a unique perspective to it and certainly a new appreciation as I sit here for it as well. So I applaud anyone that's willing to take time out from their lives for the betterment of their community. It's, I mean, it's really where I'm at.
So I'll echo the same thing, but what I did want to ask is, looking at your application, I did want to ask a deeper question concerning you acknowledging, witnessing firsthand some successes and failures in maybe some other communities that you bring that learning to hear. So I was hoping maybe you could share an example of one or the other and how you might apply it to Essex Junction.
Sure. So yeah, coming from Austin, Texas, during COVID, we had something called Safe Streets where, you know, and obviously that was a special time, but they kind of shut down some streets to through traffic, and it really, I mean, they become like, became like bike throughways, which, you know, almost like highways, which is really cool to see. And then added, kind of started to restrict some traffic to cars and add protected bike lanes on some roads. And yeah, I mean, bicycle traffic just like flourished there. And then failures, I've been hit by cars before. You know, it's, I, you know, it's, it is scary. It's not fun, to say the least. And yeah, and that, you know, that was in a bike lane, you know, but it, you know, a lot of times you say bike lane, and paint is not always infrastructure. You know, it doesn't stop a car from doing a U-turn and, you know, hitting pedestrians. So yeah, that's just a couple of things.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Is there anything, you know, do you see any, and this can be a quick answer if you like, but is there anything short-term and anything long-term that you see, any needs that you see, like quick, bike quick successes?
Bike racks. You know, my, my son and I go to Boxcar Bakery all the time, and it's really, really, you know, we have to park pretty far away at McGillicuddy's to, to, you know, then walk down and get breakfast down there. And you can kind of see it as you go around the Five Corners, that it's kind of surprisingly hard to find bike parking around.
Yep, I agree. If there are any other questions, we're trying not to make you stay too long, too, but as everyone has said, we really appreciate coming forward. And I think with Bike Walk, we should have an answer for you in the next 24, 48 hours. And we appreciate it.
Awesome. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Next, we have, and again, this is, I apologize. Elena, you want dishes? Dishes? Help me out.
You're a dishes.
You're a dishes?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. Everybody can butcher my name at the end of the meeting two or three times if they'd like to.
Hi, I'm Elena. Elena, you're dishes.
Thanks for joining. Again, I'll say it again, we've had the opportunity to read what you sent us and appreciate it. Understand you're also interested potentially in the Development Review Board.
Yes.
So we can talk about
And Planning Commission, I believe.
And Planning Commission, okay. So we can, we could have you do all three.
Sure.
Depending on how long you don't want to be.
Oh, two, actually legally only two. Sorry, excuse me. I didn't say that.
To be clear, they know the message came through. You're only up for one.
I understand.
But okay for all, so.
We're a little greedy. We'll start with Bike Walk. Is there, you know, can you kind of give us a short answer or kind of in your own words, sort of your interest there?
Yeah, I, we have a one-car household, so I've been walking, taking the bus and biking around and really enjoy all of those activities as well and have a landscape architecture and planning background. So I think I have some lens of some best practices from other guidelines and standards that I could help contribute some ideas with that.
Great. See if Amber or Elaine online have any comments, questions? No? Elaine?
Yeah, hi, Elena. I'm just curious, you, you're looking for, you applied to all three, and is the Bike Walk your number-one priority? What is, what is your priority?
Yes, well, I initially applied to the Bike Walk and then heard that you were also looking for DRB and Planning Commissioners. I think the Bike Walk is very exciting to me. It's something that feels very tangible and concrete and has a big improvement in our safety in the community. I'm also really interested in the Planning Commission and shaping those policies.
Okay. Thanks for that.
I don't see Amber's hand. Marcus?
Similar question to the one I just asked before. From your experience, from what you've seen, would there be a best or worst practice that you, that you acknowledge that you've seen or are aware of that you might apply to Essex Junction?
I think one of the things I've been noticing from other communities, but noticing that we have this problem here in Essex, is continuity so that you're not getting into a bike lane thinking you're going to be on a bike lane, and then suddenly you're in a shero that's not even a shero with no shoulder, such as on Pearl Street. So I think that making sure that there is, you know what you're getting into as a pedestrian or cyclist is important.
Thank you.
I'm particularly, as someone whose children are just coming through the school and they're on their last steps out the door, I'm particularly, the promoting Safe Routes to Schools Initiative that you mentioned. A lot of our students walk here, you know, they're neighborhood schools, so I would be interested to hear what and how you would promote or design safe routes, or if you have ideas that would bring safe routes to school. We have crossing guards and police at the Five Corners twice a day, but that's not to say that we didn't have a child get hit in the bottom of South Summit at West Street years or so ago. So whenever we put children into our, our community and expect them to get to and fro, that's a big deal for me. So I'm curious if you could maybe share an idea of how you would promote or design or build through safe routes.
I think it's pretty much just understanding that in, there's, you know, two points. There's the infrastructure needs, which is, applies in general, but also understanding what those routes are that would be most commonly taken by students to and from school. And then there's some initiatives that are more programmatic, like having a, a bike, bike bus where everyone bikes together to school so that there's sort of a critical mass and more visibility.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Thank you. Appreciate that.
And I'm going to shift us to DRB a little bit. It sounds like you've been on the other side of the DRB frequently in your professional role or periodically
Yes.
in your professional role. That sounds like a great experience to bring to the committee. Can you elaborate on, do you think you could satisfy your curiosity in the Bike Walk infrastructure by, by work on the DRB? You could say no. You can say, no, I'd rather, you know, this is, this is you doing the work, so we don't want to, you know, appoint you to something if you, if you'd prefer something else. So, you know, I guess theoretically you could do both, but we're not asking you to. DRB, you'd be basically, right, you'd be enforcing the code that's already there and making sure that properties and projects put the bike racks in they're supposed to or, you know, consider these things.
Which is an important part of the process from visioning to implementation, yeah.
Yeah. Is it, and that's something you're, you're open to and eager, eager to do?
I would say DRB is my least eager, but
Okay, all right.
I would be happy to contribute, and I do think that because I have a lot of the technical knowledge that I would be able to provide some insights.
Okay. Again, not wanting to, not wanting to make a decision for you that you're not the most happy with, understanding this is a little awkward. Is Planning Commission more your speed or is it really Bike Walk? That's your preference?
I'm also interested in the Planning Commission, yes.
Okay. I'm going to, all right, we'll just leave it at that for you right now and try to figure it out unless anybody wants to elaborate. This is really weird because we don't typically interview somebody for two or three things at once. So I am curious if, how Planning Commission would be more interesting, if you want to explain that, you know, how Planning Commission would be more interesting for you than DRB?
I think with Planning Commission, I think there's some ability to think visionary in where the, where the community is going and help guide that process.
Okay. That's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure it was in agreement with you there. All right. Well, I don't see the other counselors with their hands up, so I want to thank you for coming.
Can I just ask?
Oh, sure.
If you were to close your eyes and imagine yourself on a committee, which committee would that be? Close your eyes.
Oh, gosh.
No pressure whatsoever.
I just, I don't want, you know, I don't, you know, there's interest in multiple.
Yes.
And I don't want us to say, we think. I want you to say, I really want.
And we won't be hurt.
I think I'm most interested in the Planning Commission, actually, but I am, don't know exactly how all of these committees work, so.
Let me tell you. Neither did I. Okay, you'll find out.
Can I just, so what you have before you are more Bike Walk Advisory Committee applicants than seats and more Tree Advisory Committee than seats and more Tree Advisory Committee applicants than seats. We do not have enough Planning Commission applicants and we do not have enough DRB applicants, as well as Community Advisory Board. So we reached out to all the folks and said, "If you've got any other interest in the other committees, that would be great." Elena answered that call, very appreciative that you're open to considering the others. So, um, just to sort of give some of the background there.
Thank you.
Thank you. We should have done that at the beginning, I apologize. I think we're all set and I really appreciate you, your willingness to do this work. And we should be getting back to you very shortly, next 24 or 48 hours. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thanks.
Lauren Philbrook.
Hi, thank you for coming. Hi. Like I said before, we've, we've got your application, we've all read them. Is there, could you explain kind of your interest in Bike Walk and where you're coming from for that? Yeah, um, so kind of my most pressing interest has to do with, uh, safety for, like, vulnerable users like kids as they walk to school, because we have these small neighborhood schools and part of the promise of that is that people can walk there. But if the routes aren't safe, parents won't send their kids and kids can't walk by themselves. And I see on the walking route that I take with my kids that it's pretty dangerous. So that's, I, I mean, I talked to Raj about this and he said I should consider joining this committee, so that's kind of how I became aware of it. And thank you for doing that. Appreciate that. It was a good conversation. It was around, um, what I think is a real issue, um, that I think, I think I just kind of missed. You know, we, I think we all drive by that area you were talking about, Lincoln Terrace. So thanks for bringing that up. Amber, Elaine, anything? Nope? All good? Marcus, Tim? Marcus?
I would like, and, and not to steal your thunder from the last time, but because I did write this question in here concerning the, the kids, because again, it's in your application, I, that stood out for me. But hearing these recent comments here, I'd like to hear a little bit more about your experience, what is, what is going on at Link, I'd like to hear what's going on at Lincoln Terrace. Any ideas?
At Lincoln Terrace, um, the road and the sidewalk are almost at the same physical level, like the curb is not, has sunk or maybe never was there, I don't know. So, and there's also no grass separating the sidewalk from the road. So people also use that as a cut through to get from Lincoln to Pearl. And I've seen, they, they cut that corner from Lincoln onto Lincoln Terrace, like they'll be fully across the sidewalk. And then some of them will just be, continue driving up the sidewalk. I think maybe they don't notice that it's not road. I don't know. But, um, and in the winter it's worse, obviously, because you're pushed more. And so like there, you know, I, I think, you know, in my ideal world, that would be a one-way street with a grassy verge and a wider sidewalk and a curb, because I think physical separation from road to sidewalk or bike lane is like the key for, because, you know, it's not safe if a kid has to be paying really close attention to make sure that the car isn't in their space. It needs, there needs to be reminders to the cars that it's for people, not cars. So in that particular, that's what's going on on Lincoln Terrace, which is my own pet project. But I, as I walk, there's other places in, in town where we don't have a lot, as much separation between pedestrians and cars as I think we have space for. If we took a little bit, we would have to take more space from cars. And a lot of people do drive through here going other places. So we've dedicated a lot of space for that, but we also live here and walk here and bike here, that we need that space too, you know?
Thank you. I appreciate that insight.
You and I have talked, so I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable. So I appreciate you coming. If, Tim, if you don't have anything?
I, I'm good. I, I share your Lincoln Terrace concern. You can very tell very clearly there once was a curb. And that's, that is now all completely even. As someone who spends a lot of time in the immediate Five Corners area, I've noticed it, I see it. Always nice when someone else appreciates. So, yeah, I think I'm, I'm pretty good. Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch very shortly. And moving on to Capital Committee, Karen Dolan is our applicant for Capital Committee. Thanks for joining us.
Yes, thank you.
You've been on the committee for how many years now? Is this one term?
No, I think this will be my third term.
Third term, okay.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, no worries.
Can you let us know sort of what about that work is really interesting to you? That you want to keep, keep it up?
Yes, and I'm hearing nine, I don't think it was nine. I think it's, I don't think it's been nine years. I don't, I think I maybe started partway through a term and so I ended a term. So, yeah, I don't think seven. I don't, I've been here before. I've been here two times. So that's why, so maybe somebody has interviewed me before my term was up, I don't know. This is number three. And, um, so I apologize, the question, why am I here again?
Why are you here, Karen?
Yes, thank you.
No, more serious, more seriously, um, what, well, I'll ask a different question, I guess. How do you feel about where Bike, where Capital Committee has come from and, and the changes that have been made over the time you've been on it and sort of its next five or 10 years?
Yes.
What's your comfort level with that? What's your experience been?
Yes, so I feel like it is a very interesting committee. I joined it, um, I forget how the opening, I think it was an opening, I wanted to join a, um, community committee, I think that was the one that was available. And I was like, let's see. And so it's been a real learning opportunity for me, in a way to give back. And we also had the time of COVID where there wasn't a lot to really do in the committee for those years. So it was a slow, um, again, kind of workload of the committee. And then it's really expanded in the past couple of years, especially with Amber's leadership over it. And so I feel like it has grown and developed. And now we're hitting this new opportunity of, I think it also has to do with us becoming a city, right? Of what are the capital projects that we want to look at? Where do we want to go with it? We, um, passed the local options tax and we have, um, a local options tax policy that is, um, contributing to the capital projects. So I feel like things are coming together where we're hitting in the next level of it, so I'm excited for it. There is part of me that's still like, I really don't know a lot about, um, capital projects and infrastructure. And I try to remind myself, but that's an important perspective to bring to the committee of just asking questions and being curious and hearing from the Bike Walk Committee, like the infrastructure is key to this. And so, um, I appreciate as a learning opportunity, a way to give back to the community. I will say that, um, if there were other people interested, um, I would certainly want them to be considered. One of the things with my legislative schedule is I'm not always able to make it to the meetings, especially during the legislative session. I try, I could really appreciate the Zoom opportunity to be able to do that. But if there was somebody that was like, "I really want to be a part of this committee" and they're committed to it, I would want them to be at the table. I feel like when I'm there, I can be, uh, bring a lot and I'm certainly learning a lot, but I wouldn't want to take it from somebody else that could give more.
Okay, understood that. And I think for folks that don't know, Capital Committee basically takes the big projects that the community needs to spend money on and reviews those and assigns them a level of importance and a rank in terms of how we spend limited money for those big projects. So we just talked a lot about Bike Walk. Anything big that Bike Walk wanted to do, like, you know, narrow, put a road, get a road diet for a road and put in some infrastructure, probably would end up before Capital Review Committee for review and for scoring and take community input. And there's a whole rubric that goes through. And I don't, like you said, I don't think people need to necessarily be infrastructure experts or, uh, construction experts. I think a lot of this, um, experts come in, if I'm not mistaken, and work with you and it's just kind of common sense work. Amber, you have your hand up?
For her continued interest in staying on the committee.
You broke up, we missed the very, almost all of that, sorry, can you say that again?
Ah, clearly wasn't that important. For some reason, my internet is unstable tonight, so, um, so I just wanted to say thank you to Karen for her work on the committee and her continued interest on the committee, with her staying on the committee.
Great, thanks. Anything from Tim or Marcus? No?
I think Karen's already answered my question, so I'm good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Uh, Development Review Board and Kristin Gilde.
Hello.
Hi, thanks for coming.
Kristin Gilde, how are you?
Good. So again, we've, we know your work from DRB.
Yeah.
We've read your, um, submission. How has your, now this was your first term?
Yeah, I think I was, I finished that, so I think it's only been two years, I think.
Because you were midway.
I think I, yeah.
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 How has that been for you?
It's been great. I wanted, um, a committee where I could be involved with the community, since I sort of switched careers, so I had a little bit more time. And I've been wanting to volunteer and was sort of used to manage volunteers and then I wanted to be a volunteer. So I totally enjoy it, that working with the city, with the staff is amazing. Gina and Ashley and, um, and the committee's great. So total learning experience, um, sort of figuring out the process and how the projects come to us and reviewing them. And I feel like now I have more questions that I can ask of developers. And I actually do ask questions that are probably, you know, they probably don't enjoy, but I, my feeling is that I bring the voice of the community member. I've lived here for 15, 16 years and I want to be that voice of, you know, things are going to get developed in the city and they're going to affect our neighbors and our, everyone. And I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing and we're kind of getting it right. And, um, so I love, um, I love all the Bike Walk people here, because a lot of what we talk about with developers has to do with like Bike Walk and bike storage with any, any of the, um, new buildings that are being built, bike racks, which I completely agree we need. And so those come with all of these projects. And my feeling so far has been that the developers need to be pushed. You know, we, they, you need to push them. They're not used to being pushed and I feel like we have to push them so that they can, we can shape it into the, what we as a community want. I also think that our land development code needs to be improved so that we can hold them to that. So that needs improvement, but I feel like all of these pieces kind of have to go together. So it's been, it's been amazing and I feel like there's more, um, that I'd like to do now that I know some more, but, because I sort of sat back and was sort of listening a lot and, um, uh, and yeah. I'm sort of trying to talk someone else over here into joining, because we, we do need-
Because it's very, very exciting work.
It's very exciting. There's a lot of Bike Walk stuff that we do that is super important with all those projects. So, um, and we need, you know, no offense, but we need women, more women to volunteer and we need that voice and at the table. So, um, I would love to continue, um, but I also don't want to take a space away from someone who clearly has a lot of experience and would be amazing. So I'd love to have them join us.
Wow, no pressure, wherever you are.
Anyway, yeah, so that's all, that's all I'm going to say.
So I mean, not, not just for the person in the room, but for others that might hear this later.
Yes.
And I mean that. So are you, you sound like you're saying, you know, it is a good, it might sound daunting, but it is approachable, you know, for someone that doesn't have development experience
or doesn't have architecture experience or doesn't have history with land development
code, that it's, you know, there's a ramp up period, but it is approachable.
Yeah, oh, definitely approachable. And there's a lot of, I mean, as long as you have time to do the reading and sort of listen and I think you can get up to speed rather quickly. And, um, yeah, I, I mean, me personally, I like to be, I like listening to the neighbor, like how, how these projects are going to affect us, because they're going to affect all of us. They're going to happen. They need to happen. They're going to be good, but we need to figure out a way to help shape them so that they are the best project. So, um, I think I wrote in my application that, you know, and I, I know this is going to take time with projects that I may never see any of them come to fruition, but when they do, it would, it's so important if they do come back to the table that we are able to look at it and like, okay, we gave you approval to do these things. A lot of it, including landscaping and all of that stuff, and hold their feet to the fire to have them do those things before we give them a certificate of occupancy, because I don't think that we have done that. So, yeah. So that's, I, you know, and all these projects are not going to come about, you know, as they come through the committee and then, you know, appear, built and everything. But, um, but when they do, I hope that we have a process where that can happen. And if I can be a part of that, then that will be exciting.
Sounds fantastic.
That's all I have.
Tim?
I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the statement that as a resident, you know it's going to happen, you want to help shape it.
Yeah.
Because it affects everyone. I think that's, that's the boat we're all in, right? There's only so much that we can continue to do here in Essex Junction without redevelopment. But it's important as someone who's lived in Essex or Essex Junction now for 40 years, that we have a voice at the table, that we're steering those, that we know that we're talking to residents, we're talking to our community, we're feeling, we're talking to our neighbors and we're making impactful change. So I just want to say that I really appreciate that statement from you. I think it's a great perspective. Really happy to hear that it's something that, that comes through this committee. And I am all for holding feet to fire, because it's, it has been, uh, different.
Yeah.
And I think that, that's much needed.
But it does come down to having really good land development codes.
Yep.
Is what I figured out, all about it has to be in there. So it's all about improvement, which I think we're all doing as a new city, so it's like a process. So it's going to come together and, and the city staff is doing an amazing job, but it's not like it's going to happen tomorrow, but we have to like keep kind of pushing at it.
Well, I appreciate that comment. I appreciate your willingness to serve. So I publicly-
Can I just add one other?
Sure.
I love blinking lights, completely not related to DRB, but I'm just, now that I have the floor. I love blinking lights. And, um, I also was almost hit by a car in a place that we now have a blinking light. So whatever the budget is for blinking lights, I say-
Oh, you mean the rapid reflector?
Yes.
The acronym that doesn't make any sense?
All of them. I love them all.
The crosswalk blinkies, yes.
We need more of those, so as far as slowing traffic. Yeah, the rapid-
Rapid flashing beacons.
Rapid flashing beacons. They're fabulous.
We've all got our own name for them.
I call them blinkie mites. I don't know.
So does everybody else.
But they work.
Yes.
They work and we need more of them.
Yep, they are, they're a nice addition when they come around.
Bike Walk has gone through, I think, at least six in the past couple of years they've installed. I think they think they're done, so maybe you can just give them some input.
Okay.
Where else we need?
Put them everywhere.
Every crosswalk, everywhere.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, thanks.
I do have-
Oh, sorry.
Oh, my.
Sorry, Marcus.
I thought you were done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So first off, I just want to say again, thank you. I really did appreciate your participation in the steering committee for strategic planning. Your input was invaluable. I, I think that coming from the perspective that you had and the committee that you work on, it was great to have you a part of that discussion. I don't want to go down the rabbit hole of the enforcement, recognizing the fact that we lack that particular piece of this, of this puzzle. But I just want to acknowledge your statement in here and the fact that I recognize that enforcement is a piece that we need to address. But I did want to ask the question concerning, um, what you're seeing from some of your, from your comment in here. I want to understand a little bit better where developers are tripping up in bringing their projects to us. Is it primarily in landscaping and lighting or is it other aspects of their development, you know, of their projects that they're not understanding from our code or something of that nature?
I think right now, some of the issues have to do with projects that were already in process, um, that before this committee was created. So they're not finished yet, but I think that, um, my feeling is, and they haven't come before, I mean, it's, they're already, the, the train has left the station. It left it a long time ago. So I would, I think I was just suggesting that before we give a certificate of occupancy to some of them that are at that point, going back to the initial plans. And, and a lot of those things that can be done, because you obviously can't take the building down, have to do- And a lot of those things that can be done, because you obviously can't take the building down, have to do with landscape. And those, those kinds of pieces.
So for the new projects that are coming online, you're seeing, you're not seeing a lot of difficulty with the developers understanding our code and your interpretation of that code?
No, I know. I think it's, I think it's there. It's there now. And I think, and I think now we just got, I think put in there, we have more of like, we're looking at the design of the buildings now too, which I think is super awesome. And I think it's more some of the buildings that are coming, almost completed. That need to be, and I don't, who knows if we even have control over that? I have, I have no idea. But I'm just thinking if we did, it would be good to bring them back if we can.
Thank you.
Yeah, those are my.
Yeah.
Good.
Good. Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to Planning Commission. And Scott McCormick, who I think it says is on Zoom.
Yeah, hello everybody. Let me try to get my video up here. Why am I not, there we go.
It's all right.
There we go. Hello, everybody. Glad to be here tonight.
Nice to see you. We've read your application. It was very complete. We appreciate it. We know your work from the Planning Commission. Can you just in a, you know, in your own words briefly kind of explain why you're interested in continuing? And maybe a highlight or two of what you've accomplished on the Planning Commission so far?
Sure. Well, two years ago, when I first made my application, it was basically because I felt I had some relevant experience of working with communities outside the US for a number of years that would be applicable to Essex Junction. I've had a house in the junction for 35 years and I thought it would be time to make a local contribution. I must say that I learned a lot during the last two years. There's a lot of things I don't still understand about local government in Vermont, but I'm learning the things that I think I need to know. I think I'm very proud of what the commission has done in the last few years. We were clear from the beginning, the LDC, the land development code revisions were probably the priority. They had been working on, the previous commission had been working on that for, I'd say a good eight months before I even joined two years ago. And we've still continued to do revisions to the LDC. I'd like to see that be a priority to get it finalized. I, I know Chris is working hard to do that. And I'd like to see the council see it in one of the subsequent meetings coming up and actually get the LDC approved. That would be a priority for me in the next two years, well, next couple of months, I hope. We also spent time basically thinking about post-LDC, what we would do. And all of us took a little bit of time to go through a comprehensive plan that's still valid until I think 2028. If I'm not mistaken. And we set our priorities for the planning commission. The first priority was housing. The second priority was economic development. Third product priority was design five corners. And the fourth was climate change and energy conservation. We did, over the last two years, spend a significant amount of time on the rental registry as part of the housing priority that we were looking at. We all know where that sort of trend, where, where that sort of landed in previous council meetings. We did spend a lot of time talking not only about the rental registry, but also about housing trust funds. Also ways in which we could support landlords and low income houses within Essex Junction. Talking a little bit more about old stock, old housing stock, which Essex Junction has a lot of. And I think we had sort of not moved on from housing, but we're looking more at what, what was going to happen with the vision and strategic planning exercise. And how the planning commission would move forward based upon the pillars that came out of the planning, planning process. The other thing that I think is important is recently I've been appointed to the state's Rural Resilience and Adaptation Subcommittee of the Vermont Climate Council. The council is going through a mandated revision of the Climate Action Plan for the state of Vermont. It's currently a four-year plan. It has to be revised and approved by the state legislature in July next year. And there are a number of things in the existing plan that I feel have been underused or underutilized that could be also integrated into the planning commission's perspectives and, and future. Such as revising the energy annex that was in the comprehensive plan. It's outdated. It's, it's not visionary. It's, it's overly optimistic. It needs to be more realistically grounded. I know that during the strategic planning process, there was a required, a request, recommendation to have an energy committee for the, for the city. I see that that's not necessarily on the agenda for your discussion tonight or in the future as a committee. But I think the planning commission could assist the council in moving forward on looking at ways in which we can improve access to weatherization and electrification programs. And there's some ways to link that to the Climate Action Plan for the state. However, I have to put all this in, in the backseat and say that it depends very much on what the council's priorities are and the city's, city staff's, management's priorities are for the next five years. And I think one of the things that we talked about, all of us in the planning commission, was the need to have some kind of joint meeting with the council to talk about priorities. So that we know where we're moving forward and what we're doing. So that we don't, we don't act independently of what the council sees as priorities and the city staff. So long answer to a short question, right? Sorry about that.
That's fine. Appreciate it. I see Amber has her hand up.
Scott is the Planning Commission representative for the Capitol Committee. So I just wanted to say thanks for his work on the Capitol Committee as well.
Thank you.
Marcus?
Scott, I want to say first off, thank you for your participation in the Strategic Planning Steering Committee. I think that again, just, just like Kristen, I have to say that your thoughts were invaluable in that discussion, especially early on with your strong understanding of strategic planning theory and methodology in order to help develop how that was going to be tackled and approached. So I really, really do appreciate your, your participation in that. And it was engaging throughout the whole process. I do want to dive a little deeper into one topic that you didn't talk about just now. But you did address in your application, which was one of your priorities concerning community engagement. Do you have any thoughts, ideas? How do you see that as a priority within the Planning Commission?
I think, I joined July 2022. And I think within the second meeting, we were talking about the lack of participation. And we talked a lot about how to get the public engaged. And we continued to talk about it throughout. A lesson that I can put out there is, and I want to be careful how I say this, but the rental registry experience may have been better managed had we had connections with the landlord community. And, and the renter community, rental, you know, renters' community. If we could have engaged people in the process early on, we might not have had all the misunderstanding we had at the end. And I think it's critical to have that input with various stakeholder groups as you move forward. So we talk about housing, for example. We need to have the stakeholder groups that are involved in housing. If you talk about energy, you need to talk to the people who are involved in energy. The people that are involved in weatherization, the people that are involved in solar panels, for example. The people that are involved in EVs. You, you've got to get a sense of who the stakeholders are in the community and then be able to understand how to reach out to them. And, and I, it's not just a planning commission thing, it's a city of Essex Junction thing. I think all of us need to think about how do we get the stakeholder groups organized so that we know who to reach out to when we need to reach out to their stakeholders?
Thank you, I appreciate it. No, Tim is all set?
Satisfied.
Not seeing the other counselors for a second. I think they're all set. Scott, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Appreciate your time already on the council.
All right, thank you guys. Have a good meeting.
You too. All right, getting back up here. Sorry, a lot of scrolling. One more for Planning Commission, Luke Brockmire.
Hello, I'm Luke Brockmire. My wife and I moved to Vermont from Cincinnati by way of Dallas, Texas, about a year ago. We, we moved to Vermont because moving to Texas made us quite aware of a changing climate. It made us quite aware of the planning that needs to be done around that climate and the, the shifts that are going to occur alongside it. So we, the, the climate model said, New England is going to be the place to move. We, we came to Vermont and we fell in love with the 25 mile an hour speed limits. We fell in love with how you go outside and it doesn't smell like car exhaust. And how every community has a center and an identity that is unique and itself. That's unique in itself. So we, we bought in Essex Junction, Essex Junction for somebody moving to Vermont, I think is really the ideal location. It has a feel that's really similar to a, a urban neighborhood in Cincinnati or in Cleveland. It's very central, so we can just pop all over the state, which is something that Midwesterners, Texans are accustomed to, to being able to do. And so I, I've also lived my entire life in places that don't have 25 mile an hour speed limits, that don't have clean air, clean water. So I, I feel compelled to do what I can to help protect these aspects. So I applied for Planning Commission. Some of my background in Cincinnati is that I was the president of my community council. That's sort of the, the civic body in every neighborhood that grants approval to development projects, to transportation projects, that sort of thing. And so we went through a visioning process, which then led to a strategic plan, which then led to redevelopment of our main and main. And so I feel like I have a lot of background for a lot of the things that, that Essex Junction wants to do in the coming years. So I am very excited to help.
Excellent. Thank you. It's a great explanation. I can't see. Amber, do you have anything?
No, she's good.
Marcus?
Yes. I would like to ask if you would, if you don't mind expanding, because as I read through your application, a word stuck out for me. As you wrote about the fact that you saw a transition in your, in your neighborhood, going from form-based code to navigating the pressures of becoming a trendy neighborhood in the region. I'd like to understand the word trendy a little bit, because as I think about that word, it sounds very short-term in comparison to, again, the envisioning for the long-term of a community.
So, and it, it's kind of hard to say today, how much of it, how much of the growth is permanent? And how much of the growth is the housing inflation that has kind of occurred nationwide? But so my neighborhood was a Rust Belt neighborhood. In the 2010 census, there were 10,000 residents. And then we went through this visioning process. We went through this rebranding. And for the 2020 census, there were 15,000 residents. So it was 50% growth. And we did not build fast enough. So we went, we started as a neighborhood where you could rent a place for a hundred dollars a month. You know, there were houses that the landlord was like, nobody wants to live here if you give me any money at all. Then we kind of re-entered a, a housing market where you would rent a place for like 600, $800 a month, which is like a Midwestern price. And then by 2018, it was like 1600, $1800 a month. And that created a lot of tension that the people moving into the neighborhood were earning 18 times as much as the people who were originally there. Not really 18 times, but there was, there was a considerable wealth gap. And simultaneously, as we were building all of this rental housing in a longstanding community, navigating, navigating somebody's concept of affordability when they've owned their house for 60 years. They would be like, anything more than $50 a month is gentrification. And be like, well, when's the last time you rented? Oh, 1965. So, you know, hopefully what we built lasted. I think one of the things I'm concerned about is that a lot of that inflation will actually not go back down. And so working class people will have a hard time moving to that neighborhood because we weren't quite in time with, with building enough housing to support the quantity of people who now wanted to move there.
Thank you.
This could be a very long conversation, so I just want to respect the fact, I've got a lot of questions, but I want to respect the fact that we have more people to interview. But I, I mean, I feel comfortable that I know where you're coming from, so I do look forward to. I guess I'd ask on the not keeping up front, are you seeing similar things play out here?
I am deeply concerned. So my wife and I have a regular appointment over by the Costco. And so we take Severance out. And I'm deeply concerned by the quantity of apartments going up at Severance and Roosevelt in Colchester. That tells me that those developers want to be building in a traditional population center, but there's nowhere for them to build, so they're instilled building on the periphery. And what happened throughout the Midwest is that everybody moved from the population centers to the periphery. And then when everybody lives in the periphery, there is no center anymore. There's only a periphery. And that, I think, would be my biggest concern about the regional pace of development.
So when you have a community like ours where the state is giving, putting pressure on us to be that center of development and population growth. And you have a conversation like we're going to have in a half an hour around something that's going to impact the quality of life of the people that we're told need to move in here and where we need to build, how do you balance that? Was that too big a question? We appreciate you coming.
Yeah, yeah, no.
That was a tough one. Well, that's what I was saying, like, this could be a really cool conversation, but we don't, no. I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I think that's kind of what we're up against and that's the kind of, not up against, but that's kind of what, that's where we find ourselves. And I think, so I, I should have just said that as a statement, kind of like, I appreciate your perspective coming from a place where you've recognized issues like that and just left it at that. So I'm not going to make you answer that question.
Well, actually to kind of promote the work, I guess Ashley has, has gone home. But the work that Ashley's doing is incredibly important in terms of developing a brand that people will think of as being Essex Junction. And if, there are a lot of people who want to go to concerts. I can hear the concerts from my backyard. So as long as I like the band, I like, I like the concerts. So that, that sort of branding is determinative, that, that there is a market for anything.
Right.
And, and so that's, those are, those are decisions. Those are decisions to be made. And if planning and development review and city council don't collaborate effectively, then the decision kind of gets made by default. And that can lead to a less fun place to live.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question? Sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yes, yes.
I am just curious if you were to have any interest in the development review board.
Oh, thank you.
So, after hearing the discussion of it and the slot, I would be interested, I didn't apply for it because I'm concerned I would Ohio it up too much.
You would. What? Ohio it up? Okay.
In Cincinnati, I've done a ton of work around development review and around navigating zoning and planning. I have only lived here for a year, and I haven't reprogrammed myself from that. So, I wouldn't want to hold people, I wouldn't want to hold developers in Vermont to a standard that only exists in my head.
Okay. So, that sounds like a no.
Yeah.
It sounds workable to me, I just.
Yeah, if you need me to.
Okay. All right, that's a yes. All right. That's what, that's what we call an Ohio yes. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. For those very patient tree advisory committee members, or potential members, Leslie Goldring. Thank you very much for waiting and for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Again, I'll say it again, we've, we've read your application. We appreciate you coming. Is there anything you'd like to just kind of focus on in terms of what your interest is in the tree advisory committee?
I would probably reiterate a lot of what I already told you guys. I love green space. I have fond memories of trees and woods and when I found out there was a tree committee thing, I was like, "Oh, I need to go and help them out," because that's where my interest is very strong.
Great.
I do have a question.
I know. No, it's perfectly fine.
All right. Leslie, I did want to ask, is again, looking, looking over your application, one of the things I wanted to dive a little bit deeper on is, again, being, being a gardener, as you acknowledge in your application, right? And I know that this is the tree committee. But I did want to kind of get your thoughts about the green space in the city. Give me kind of a quick take on what you think about our green space. Good bet.
Quick. I had, part of what drove me to go was that I am concerned, like, a lot of the new projects that are going up seem to be, you know, instead of putting parking in front, you put parking in back or underneath, but then, there's this little teeny space in front of the building that looks horrible. That could, a lot more could be done with. As far as, we're talking green space here. I always am drawn to those news articles that talk about, especially in European cities, the green spaces, how the temperatures are lower and people spend more in the stores and everybody's depression is better and people prefer living in those communities. They prefer their walk to school or their drive to work in those communities. I, so, I feel very strongly that we should have all those trees and some bushes and all that green space. I, you know, I mean, we're putting in buildings, but that doesn't mean there shouldn't be a green space. Would you want to live in an apartment building that had no place to go sit outside? You know? Seems pretty depressing.
I'll simply say that, as a dog owner, it makes it very, very difficult for me to consider that kind of housing. But, yeah, because there's a lack of green in some of that. But I appreciate your insight. Thank you.
Makes a lot of sense. Amber, Elaine, anything? No? Okay. Tim? I appreciate it.
Can I just reiterate that I have been working with the tree committee, attending their meetings, going to tree planting classes, the state urban forestry conference and the weeding parties and tried to dive right into that.
Appreciate your time. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Kirsty Pascal, I think, is on Zoom. Hi there.
Hi. Is Zoom working?
Yeah, we have you. We can hear you and see you.
Okay. Hi, nice to meet you.
Thanks for coming. Can you, we've read your application. Can you give us, you know, is there anything you'd like to add to that in terms of your interest for tree committee and, and what's motivating you?
Yeah, I think, what I'll just say quickly is, I used to work in municipal government. I worked for the city of Winooski for five and a half years, and I really miss having a connection to the community in that way. You know, I since had a career change and life happened, and I'm excited to have an opportunity to plug back in in Essex Junction. I believe at the time that I applied, I had only submitted for tree committee. Over the course of the conversation, you noted that there are other openings, so I would be open to considering the Planning Commission as well, if that's of interest. But I was particularly excited about the tree committee, because I also am a gardener. I do have an interest in the potential of the urban forest and sort of, as other folks have said, the potential there to use nature as infrastructure to address the changes of climate change and ongoing development. Yeah. That's the long and short.
That sounds great. Do you, so it sounds like you, you know, you've considered the fact that you can have a similar impact, maybe not as hands-on, but a similar impact in the Planning Commission in terms of, you know, setting the rules around that.
Yeah, I did some reading briefly while we've been on the line, so I didn't study quite as much as I did for the tree committee. I did do a little bit of reading, and I am interested in, I was, you know, scrolling through some of the comprehensive plans, and there's definitely a lot of potential there to be involved in different ways and touch on a lot of things that impact all the parts. And I do think that some of these, like, big-picture issues are just as exciting as some of the more specific issues.
That's great to know. Thank you for that. Not seeing any hands online from Elaine or Amber. Marcus?
First off, as a guy who likes funky glasses, love your glasses. Can I ask about your Winooski experience? Like, what did, what did you do for the city of Winooski?
So, I was the children and family programs manager for five years, and then, there was a brief stint where our city manager had left and my boss, Ray Coffey, had moved up to be interim city manager. So, during that time, I was the interim community services department head. So, I had oversight of parks and rec, libraries, senior center, children, family programs, facilities, et cetera. And also, during that time, I did some work on our pool committee when we were building what is now the Myers Community Pool. Oversaw as part of the senior committee and briefly oversaw the community services commission.
Thank you.
Impressive. Anything?
It's more than qualified, which.
I know, a little intimidated right now.
I'm a little rusty.
Well, I very much appreciate your openness and your quick study while you waited on the Planning Commission, and you'll definitely hear from us one way or the other in the next 24 to 48 hours. So, thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Andrea Shortstreet.
Okay, so she.
Oh, right, right, right.
Had a conflict, so she can join us in July.
Right. Right. Warren Spinner. I did say you'd have to remind me.
Hello, city councilors. Good to see you all.
Nice to see you.
Thank you. Warren Spinner. Re-upping for the tree committee. And don't ask me how many years. It's been a few. Oh, gosh, yeah, I think so. But anyway, up for reappointment, I, I just want to say, in times past when I've come to re-up and go in front of trustees and now councilors, never had so many people from the village here to volunteer for committee assignments and to hear everyone. And I say, you should be very proud and honored to have such a response from the community to jump on all these boards, which is, it's fantastic. But back to the tree committee, we have a great partnership with the, the planning department here. And the DRB and the Planning Commission folks are dear to our hearts as we review and look at landscaping on these projects. And I've heard some comments tonight, which kind of lead right into, we're feeling kind of the same way about some of these things. But anyway, I think we're moving forward, getting there, working on things. So, back to the urban forest in your city. It's growing. I think it's doing well. We have a great number of trees, and we serve both on the, in the public right-of-way. We assist with the parks, and we also assist with private homeowners with tree questions. So, we kind of get the whole realm. We do have plans and policies as well. I will just say that our policy, our tree policy, needs to be updated as well. And that's one thing that we've talked about in our meetings that we need to work on. Right now, it's, it's outdated as it works with the state of Vermont's tree warden, new tree warden laws. So, anyway, that's, that's, that's one of the things we're going to be working on. That's policy-related. Everything else we're doing, we're just hanging in there, and as we've talked before, Emerald Ash Borer is in this community now, and we're, we're really working hard with with public and, and private residents on how to deal with that. And we have an EAB grant. We're going to be planting trees next spring as part of that grant. And, and my walk around today in the neighborhood, I'm seeing signs of a lot more trees that have problems. They're all, all ash, though. So, anyway, we continue to work on that. Our partnership with your Department of Public Works, I can just say, is excellent. They are great to work with. They've helped us a lot. We've helped them a lot. It's, it's back and forth all the time. And as I said, working with the Planning Commission now, which is great. And, well, actually, the planning department, I should say. So, it's all good.
That's great. And it's nice to hear nice things about Public Works. We do hear a lot of nice things about Public Works, but it's always nice to hear.
Oh, yeah. We're, we're probably working with them, especially this time of year, probably on a weekly to bi-weekly basis at communication with them.
Removing a lot of ash trees as well these days from public?
We have.
Yeah.
We have. And I noticed in walking in the neighborhood, there was two homeowners that removed theirs. So, it's on both, it's in that, that whole development. So, we're, we're going to be reforested that area.
Is there, yeah, is there, if I remember correctly, there's an area of the city where they're more prevalent than, than the rest?
Yes, it's down off West Street. It's down on Hayden, Wilkinson, Lavoy, Tyler.
Okay.
That area.
Excellent. Marcus?
Quick question for you. I'm sure this will be quick. Thinking about, and again, I have to acknowledge the fact that the work that the committee has done with the ash borer problem is highly commendable. And, but I do have a quick question about whether or not you feel we're able to keep up with it, with our current, the current program? Is there more that has to be done for it? Or are we going to end up behind on this problem and we're going to, we're going to feel the devastation before we're able to solve the problem? The other is, if there is a project that stands out for you that we might be missing, maybe this is not the case, that we might be missing because of either manpower or budget?
Budget will be the big one. Money.
Yeah.
We're fortunate that Public Works can do some of the removals. They can also, they've done some stump grinding for us. Some of these trees now are, have approached the size that they're not comfortable with doing it, so we have to put it out to bid, get them removed, so that's costing us as well. So, it turns into be a balancing act where we're able to use some of that expended funds to match this grant that we have. But that's just this grant.
Right.
And I did ask the question and from this, from the state, and this grant will not be available for municipalities in next year, this specific one. So, it's going to all fall back to us. So, on the other hand, the fortunate thing is, is that where we may have to spend money on removals, with our collaboration and partnership with Branch Al Burlington, where we have a couple of rows of trees, we can bring trees in and replant very reasonable. Okay? So, there's that. So, if all these trees should go south on us and we have to take them down all in one year, it's going to be expensive. I did lay some numbers out when, in the Emerald Ash Borer management plan. Fortunately, we don't, we don't have to do that. So, again, I just appreciate the, the budget funding that you have been giving the committee to do this work. And hopefully, I know it's tough, but hopefully, you can continue to, you know, give us some money to keep doing this work.
I think that's the plan. That's the hope. I'm not seeing hands up from Elaine or Amber. I just want to say, we appreciate the time that you've put into the city. The accolades that the city's received for being a tree-friendly community.
Oh, you're welcome.
The hours and time that you and the committee have put in, so thanks.
We're definitely glad to help you.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. I think that is all for interviews this evening. Thanks for, everybody for coming. Anything else on that before we move on? No?
Raj?
Yes, hi.
Raj, just a quick thing. I've been approached by the Vermont, oh, excuse me, the Essex Historical Society, which is not a city committee, but they are looking for new leadership. So, I just thought this might be a good opportunity to say that there are some seats open on the Essex Historical Society. Don't have to be a historian, don't have to live in Essex for the, your entire life. They're just looking for folks who are interested in keeping a good organization going and keeping our history alive.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to 5C, discussion and consideration of Champlain Valley Expo sound waivers and concerts. Tim Shea is with us. Tim, if you would come up to the table.
Excuse me, Raj. One more thing.
Yes.
First, I apologize for not being in person. I have COVID, and I'm going off and on camera because I'm coughing and sneezing, so my apologies for that. But more importantly, for this particular agenda item, I believe I have a conflict of interest. My husband is on the board of the Champlain Valley exposition, and I think it would be inappropriate for me to participate and vote on this topic. So, I will recuse myself from this conversation and remain quiet.
Okay. Understood. Thank you very much. Tim, welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thanks for having me.
Do you, I miss, we have a presentation.
Yes. Let me get it up and running here.
And for the record, Tim Shea, executive director of the Champlain Valley exposition.
Thanks for waiting through the interviews and.
I learned a lot.
And when you move to Essex Junction, you can volunteer for. Look for you on DRB.
Great. Well, thanks again. And I do a PowerPoint presentation here, but I thought I'd run through that and then answer whatever questions the council.
That's great.
May have, so.
Sorry, Tim, can I interrupt you for one quick second? Marcus, since I have this presentation up, it's going to be a little bit difficult to make sure I catch all the people that might be coming or going. If you could give me backup on that?
Absolutely.
Excellent. Thanks.
All right. If you go to the next slide, please.
A little background on the grandstand. I suspect everyone's, or most people are familiar with it. Built in 1966, structurally very sound. We have an engineer who checks it out every year. Some of the challenges, and I suspect folks who have been to shows at the fair, the seating's awful, the track surface is dirt. We struggle with that a lot with mud and wind when it's dusty. And the restrooms are terribly dated, and they're, you know, they're supplemented with portlets, which, you know, people don't, don't enjoy. Next slide, please. While we're here tonight, we're requesting 15 additional sound waivers to make improvements to this historic grandstand. We feel that can create new arts, community. Uh, we feel that can create new arts, community, economic development opportunities for the city of Essex Junction. Uh, I want to go back, I want to be really clear there. We're not seeking any, uh, funding of any sort from the city. When we had our community forum last week, I think that question came up. And I want to be really clear that we're, um, not requesting that. And we feel we can create additional local options, uh, tax revenue. Next slide. Again, some images there of what the seating or the, uh, the grandstand looks like, the dirt tract. Uh, we want to enhance the guest experience, replace seating, replace the dirt tract with a concrete pad. Those two projects alone, uh, which are just kind of scratching the surface are about a million dollars. Right now, we only use the, uh, the grandstand the 10 days of the fair. Um, you can never justify an expense like this for the 10 days. There'd be no way to pay it back. So our, 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 I, our plan, our, our request, our desire is to expand the program in the grandstand so that you could, if you do up to 15 additional shows, all of a sudden you can, you know, build a, a business model to pay, pay back, uh, the investment. And we would need the, the additional sound waivers. Um, a little on CVE. Again, I, I think I'm preaching to the choir here what CVE is, a place to walk your dog. I know we made some enhancements to our signage this past spring with some feedback from the council here. Um, uh, people teach their kids to drive, you'll read, write, you know, hit golf balls, a little bit of everything, play indoor soccer. I dropped my son off at the train station a few weeks ago and it reminded me that what a part of the, uh, Essex, the train is, part of the fabric, part of the brand. And I think the fair and CVE is, is similar to that. You look at the city logo right there, you see the Ferris wheel, uh, in the background. Uh, next slide, please. Again, more if on CVE, we're, you know, the anchor of Pearl Street Commercial Zone. Uh, there's really no other cultural entertainment venue like in Chittenden County or the state for that matter, I would say. As the city grows, you know, we want to grow along with the city and, you know, in a collaborative partnership that benefits all stakeholders. We're getting ready for the Fourth of July celebration next week. Uh, we host city elections, the parade. Again, I, these are the things I suspect most people are familiar with. Um, this week we're hosting, um, Essex Cub Scouts Camp. We do it every year. We don't charge them a nickel and they're here for all, uh, five days using our facility. And we're thrilled to have them there. I think there's 60 scouts running around there, uh, this weekend. It's great to have them. We do, uh, endless amount of public safety training. Uh, again, no charge at all. And we're more than happy to continue to provide that space. Next slide, please. Uh, again, community events. Um, I think folks are familiar with, uh, this is just a short list of what we do. We had Girls on the Run a couple of weeks ago, Relay for Life, the cancer survivors walk. There's Cub Scout Day Camp and, you know, 4H competitions, job fairs, a little bit of everything. I'm not going to read this right here, but there's some testimonials we have from organizations we work with. Um, but I encourage folks, if this will be online, to go through and read these, uh, these notes we received. Uh, the highlight there is American Cancer Society, Relay for Life, Chittenden County, extends a heartfelt appreciation to CVE enduring commitment, serving as a steadfast pillar for our community of cancer combatants. It's like an eye test here for me. But, uh, next slide, the, um, uh, Substance Abuse Event we host. Uh, for the most, past two years, uh, we've held Substance Abuse Addiction Summit at CVE, um, the largest summit of its kind in Vermont. Next slide, please. Girls on the Run. Uh, Girls on the Run recognize CVE as a supportive appreciation of commitment to their mission and allowing their event to succeed. Next slide. Looks even tougher. Uh, 4H. 4H, what it says is that, you know, we provide space to 4H events free of charge, fundraising events. And there are events, there's nowhere else for these events to take place if not for CVE. Well, you know, we talked a lot about, you know, where's the agriculture? We hosted a number of 4H events. They're really small. They're not really the fanfare. They're occurring. They're not events that really the public attend. It's really just the 4H community. So there's more ag programming going on sometimes than people realize. Next slide. I think folks are familiar with what we did for COVID, over 80,000 vaccines, about 400 bed search hospital, food distribution. And we hosted the 2020 and 21 Essex High School graduation, uh, and we were thrilled to do it. We repurposed ourselves in a short period of time and, uh, we were, you know, proud to be, um, play a small part in the state's, um, reaction to COVID. Next slide, please. You know, what you realize, uh, when we discussed it internally, when communities face challenges, you need a facility like CVE. The National Garden moved in, uh, and again, we made it, uh, made it available. And we'll do it again if ever needed. Our challenges as an organization is not unique to CVE, but our expenses are growing at a faster pace than our revenues. We have, anyone who's been in the other grounds, a tremendous amount of deferred maintenance. It's been 20 years since we did our last capital improvement. And we fixed roofs and roads and things like that, but nothing to really expand our, our programming. And we want to reinvest in the facility. And another challenge we're having is post-COVID, a number of, uh, special events did not rebound the, the way, uh, we had hoped. The Farm Show, one of our largest special event show, has not occurred since 2020. And the Vermont Quilt Show, it's been a staple in the community, uh, about this time of year, uh, they disbanded as an organization. Next slide, please. What about the agricultural? Agricultural program is an expense, not a source of revenue. The special events that we host underwrite our agricultural programming. So more special events. What I mean special events, I mean concerts, craft shows, car shows. More special events means more ag programming. There has been a lot of discussion on the Facebook, uh, group about the impact CVE has, you know, on the local businesses that they shut down. And I guess there was a study done some time ago. I've never seen that study, so I thought I'd reach out to a few businesses. Um, Vespas Pizza, um, this is the owner, Steve Vespa, we love having you as a neighbor. Some events at the fairgrounds direct more traffic than others, but I cannot think about anything, at a time, anything at the fairgrounds has affected us negatively. We would love to see you upgrade your facilities and, and more concert traffic. Next slide. On Tap, when, when events occur at the Champlain Valley Expo, On Tap Bar and Grill benefits by an increase in business. Our guests stop by for a meal before and after. This additional business would not have occurred if not for the events at CVE. On Tap supports CVE's efforts to expand the number of, uh, events in the grandstand. Corner Variety and Fairgrounds Beverage, similar here. Um, Fairgrounds Beverage sees an increase, uh, no matter the event. Five Corner also sees an increase, a bump. During Wolf's Gart, uh, sales increased by 10 to 20%. Fairgrounds Beverage sees an increase of 20% for the two weeks, you know, the setup and the fair itself. Concerts are example of events that bring increased customers. Next slide. Uh, Gabe Handy owns the two shopping centers, uh, next to us and soon the hotel. Events at, at CVE benefit the businesses in our two shopping centers. Our proximity to CVE is one of the reasons we chose the Essex Junction to build the hotel. Uh, Lake Champlain Chamber, events at the Champlain Valley Expo attract people to our region that may not otherwise visit. While here, they stay in local lodging, shop, dine and fill up on gas. This economic activity benefits, um, Essex Junction and the region. Um, another challenge we're facing as an organization is the, uh, Vermont Clean Water Act of 2015, where any, for, any landowner on the Lake Champlain side at Lake Mankin, with three or more acres of impervious surfaces, that's rooftops, parking lots, needs to mitigate that for stormwater reasons. We, uh, of the 130 acres we have, we have 33 acres of impervious service. The estimated cost to remedy it is $50,000 an acre or a million and a half dollars to CVE. And that we're submitting our application next month and that work will have to occur over the next five years. Public safety expenses. We have a phenomenal relationship with Essex Police Department. They do a great job for us. When, and CVE pays, uh, anytime you see a Essex police at CVE for an event, they are, you know, they are reimbursed. In 2019, we spent between police and security, $135,000 for the 10 days of the fair. This year, we're projecting $260,000 for police and security. The, we were notified a couple of months ago, last year we paid $70 an hour for Essex police. This year will be 95. That's an additional $35,000 expense to us. Uh, two years ago, Essex police suggested we implement bag checks, which we did at the fair. Uh, that's an annual $50,000 expense, uh, for bag checks at the fair. Repairs, again, what we've done, um, over the past few years, nothing, you know, fancy at all, just things that maintain the facility, the Blue Ribbon Pavilion, where we host the, um, Diane runs the elections there. We put a new roof on this past spring for $80,000. Last year, Vermont State building another $80,000. We rebuilt the horse barn out back, talking about agriculture. We put $200,000 into that. We use it for the 10 days of the fair, probably five times, other times during the year. When we host horse events, we rent out stalls at $25 a night. You know how long it takes back to pay $200,000 when you're renting it out at $25 a night? The math, this doesn't work. Uh, HVAC units, replaced a bunch of those. Uh, Gate E, the gate that goes out the northwest corner towards Colchester, a new culvert in December 2022, uh, $95,000. So all in, and that's. The unfortunate thing of those expenses there, it doesn't change the experience of the fairgoer or person attending event one bit. It's all just, you know, things you have to do. Next slide, please. Benefits of the city. Uh, right now with the local options tax, uh, the numbers we've, uh, projected, we're contributing just shy of $50,000 a year, uh, in local options tax. And I believe the city gets 70% of that and the 30% goes to the state. Next slide, please. If we were to expand our program with concerts, we estimate that we can generate $600,000 in new local options in addition to what we're doing right now over the next 10 years. A lot of discussion about what the, uh, the impact event attendees have on the community. And there's a study done by the Chicago Loop Alliance that for every ticket sold, $12 is spent locally on gas, food, lodging, beverage, et cetera. Next slide. That's what my formal presentation. Uh, I'm happy to answer whatever questions you may have.
Great. Thanks, Tim. Um, I'm sure we all have some, um, but first I wanted to say, I appreciate the community forum from last week. Appreciate you taking that step. Um, and appreciate you coming with the presentation tonight. And certainly can appreciate the position CVE finds itself in.
Thank you.
And, uh, you know, it goes without saying, thank you for the, um, availability of the facilities, um, and everything you provided. So, um, that's a preference for some difficult questions. Um, generally, I think I'm cautiously supportive of this, but I think for me, it's a lot in the details in terms of how we work it out. Um, I don't get a sense that I understand, and we're going to go around, but I don't get a sense that I understand how many shows. I'd like to know how many shows you're anticipating of the small, the medium, midway size? And how many that you're anticipating and over what period of time, um, sort of assuming it's May to October, um, for the larger grandstand shows. So the, the smaller midway shows are something like 1,500 to 5,000 people or 4,000 people. And the, the larger grandstand, my understanding is it's around up to 11,000-ish.
Correct.
So yeah, looking for a sense of how that breaks down so we can get a sense of what that's going to look like monthly.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll address the schedule first. Uh, for the most part, the outdoor concert season is called Memorial Day, or maybe middle of May through middle of October. Get beyond the middle of October, you start, you know, it gets a little chilly. Size of show, our intent would be if we were to move forward this, all the shows would take place in the grandstand. Not on the midway. And one reason we're proposing that is the concert model, setting up, tearing down, setting up, it just doesn't work. And every time we do a show on the midway lawn, we can only bring the stage in for that show that has to come down. So the idea is to move the infrastructure and build it and set it for the summer and then run every show through there. And I say up to 15 shows. It may be eight to maybe 12, depending. You know, routing is everything with a band's route. I would say the average show is probably going to be in your five to 6,000 person range. You, you know, there could be some larger ones up to 11, but that's kind of an Easter Sunday situation for us to sell 11,000 tickets. It, it has to be the, Elton John, it has to be the right artist to sell that many tickets. Um, so I don't see a scenario where a majority at all would be, you know, north of 10,000 people. I think that comfort zone's going to be that, you know, six, 7,000 people.
And of the waivers that you already use, some of those will be concert. All the concerts will have the ability to be up to, they'll be grandstand concerts at this point. So they'll be potentially being larger.
Correct, they will, but not necessarily though. Again, it's, it would, to book a large show, that's a lot of risk on the promoter. And, you know, you need to weigh that. Okay, if we're going to pay an artist $400,000 a night to perform, can you sell that many tickets?
Yeah. I guess trying to get my head around, um, because you're 20 or so right now and a lot of those are used up for other things that are already occurring.
Fairs, 10 of them, and then, uh, other shows.
And so 10 days of the fair in August, three or four concerts during that. Um, and the rest of the 25 would be spread out between mid-May and October.
Correct.
Are you at all open to having a per month quota or limit?
Repeat that?
We, are you at all open for those to having any kind of limit per month or per week? Or per number of days per week that there can be a concert or, um, and we can, you know, we can send some of these questions over too. I think everybody, I don't, you know, we could probably be here for a while asking a lot of questions, but if you, you know, we can also send some. But it's the kind of thing, trying to get a sense of like, you know, what's the impact going to be? Because really this is only five months. And if there are 30 to 40 events, um, they could very well be concentrated in a short period of that. It's just, you don't, like you said, you don't know. And we don't know how big they are. We don't know when they're going to be. But if you're able to book them in a short period of time, two months, then that is a big number per month or per week. Um, and the impacts, even if they're 5,000 and 11,000, even if that mix is somewhere in there, just trying to get a sense for the community with that. Because we have to, we have to think about this in the potential.
Yeah, no question.
Because these aren't scheduled yet. Um, and so if you don't, you know, you can think about that. We don't, you know, this is very much informational for both of us, I think. So I don't necessarily need answers to these tonight.
No, and I will give some thought, but I'll, I'll say briefly is that, uh, so much of it is the, uh, the routing of the artists when they're available. They pick us, we don't pick them. Uh, but I certainly appreciate, you know, five or six in a row is not, not ideal.
Yeah. Um, and are you, another big question is sort of, it's unclear to me also, how long this, or what you're looking for this approval, how long you're looking for it to last? Is this something that your intention is that this would be an annual request and we'll see how it goes every year? Or are you looking for this to be the new normal?
It would, uh, we would, the request will be the new normal. The reason I say that is if we were to make that investment and let's say after one year you say, eh, Tim, it's not what we had in mind, we're.
Invested.
It, we're in a far worse situation than we are right now, having invested a million dollars on something we can't use.
Right. That was sort of my assumption, but I just needed to know. Um, and what's your timeline for this decision?
I mean, like anything, the sooner the better. Gives us more time there, but I want to make sure, you know, you folks are comfortable with it.
Okay. Um, I have a lot. I'm going to ask two more and then we're going to wrap up on this thing. Sorry.
Can I expand on one of your questions? So if you don't mind?
Yeah, no, it's fine.
So just again, to understand impact a little bit, um, from the standpoint of what Raj was, was talking about from, you know, the range of when these would happen, just for discussion sake, if we were to allow this tonight, how quickly do you think that this would be able to impact your ability to add new shows into the lineup? I mean, are we, are you going to even be able to do it in this current season?
Not in 2024. I mean, 25 would be a stretch, um, to one, get the work done with the way construction is these days. Two, you'd need to put, you know, offer, we just don't go pick the bands. We put offers in and they take months to say yes or no if they're going to accept our offer.
Okay. Um, lot funding, lot, lot revenues. Um, this is something this board's talked about a couple of times, you know. I'm moderately skeptical that, not from the CVE's doing, but vendors and other folks that would sell or collect at the fairgrounds, that that is, that we're, we're getting a lot of compliance there. And the state unfortunately is not very helpful with that. It's sort of on, on the entity to report and collect. So I guess I'd want to try to see if, my question is basically, how open is CVE in working with us to whether it's educating vendors or promoters or figuring out methods so that we can capture this benefit? I realize your ticket sales will probably do that, but I do have a question. If Higher Ground sells tickets online or at their venue in South Burlington, are they collecting the one percent because it's, I mean, technically I think they're supposed to. Are they collecting, reporting the one percent because the concert's in Essex Junction? You know, those are the kinds of assurances, because it's all well and good to say, yes, we're going to see six hundred thousand dollars, which is only seventy percent of fifty a year. And in the grand scheme, that's appreciated, but it, you know, but if we're not getting it collected, then we're not going to see it. So I know we've talked about this before and it's a challenge for you as well. I just don't know, you know, are you all open to kind of keeping this conversation going and figuring out?
You have our word, we will do whatever. During the fair, we submit to the state, here's a list of all the vendors. I will say that, you know, for concerts, there's fewer vendors, so it's easier to manage and they're all local. So they have a vested interest in playing by the rules. Cause if they don't, they know they won't be asked to come back.
Okay.
And can I just add one, one thing that it is true that for ticket sales, it is the destination location of the event where the lot is collected.
Okay, yeah, that was, yeah. Amber, do you have, like, I've got more I can come back to, but do you have any questions that you're waiting to ask?
Yeah, Tim, I'll just ask one question of the, with the proposal. Are you looking to have concerts during the weekend? Or during the week during when, cause you indicated it was a May to October timeframe during when kids are in school?
It would be, you know, potentially any day of the week is what we're proposing right now.
So similar, I think, to Raj's question about thoughts to maybe take back after this is, if there were some parameters put on, you can't do, you can't use the waivers during, one, schools in session. Monday through Thursday, you can do it Friday, Saturday, Sunday on the weekends. Would that, would that potentially hamper your ability to, to offer the programming that you're trying to offer? And again, I don't, I'm not looking for an answer tonight, it's just something to take back.
Okay, I'm happy to speak to it now if you'd like me to.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, you folks set the rules, but I, I mentioned before, the bands pick us, we don't pick them. We, we're a small, 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 small market. They're going to go to larger markets on the weekends, the bands will, because you go to a place with a capacity of twenty-five thousand versus a place of ten thousand. So for us to say it can only be a certain nights, I'm not saying it wouldn't work, but it would really limit our ability.
Marcus?
Amber, you're done, you're good?
Good for now, thanks.
No problem.
I looked at you, cause she said one question, so I was holding her to it.
No, it's fine, it's fine, I just want to make sure she got it. So one of the things, again, acknowledging the, the sound concern that we've heard from the community. You've been here for our previous conversations about sound and, you know, the, the limit, the limits that are already in our agreements with CVE concerning decibel levels. Recognizing too, that within those particular agreements, right now, we don't have that room to maneuver with those numbers. So I do want to acknowledge, I, I do want to ask about, from an improvement standpoint, have you thought about any efforts, whether it's tree lines or other aspects that may be used in your improvements in order to try to help mitigate sound travel from the, the grandstand outward toward the community?
Yeah, I'll just say, you know, we're open to anything that will make this work and be financially feasible also. But if it's, you know, cause I know there, there are some things you can do with trees or other things to help mitigate the sound. And by all means, we'd be certainly open to those discussions.
Tim?
Do you have a question?
No, I've got plenty.
I, I was just going to say, after the community development, or the community information meeting that we went to, I spent quite a bit of time out and I had an initial knee jerk reaction of, well, I'm sure we could make this work for everybody. And then I ran across this agreement that runs through December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-seven, where I can't make that amenable to anybody, because I can't just ask you for a dollar a ticket surcharge to benefit the residents of Essex Junction to make it more palable to everybody. So moving this forward, if this is a blanket proposal, I'm not necessarily amendable to making it a blanket proposal beyond this date of existence of this agreement of December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-seven, without some renegotiation to figure out if we can make this work completely for the residents of Essex Junction. I will say that I spent time talking to people that were walking through the neighborhoods behind Essex Automotive, in my neighborhood of Indian Acres, to just people that are walking and amenable, are open to conversation. I did hear a lot of support for it, but I also heard that there's a lot of nervousness around it. And again, it goes back to that May through October timeframe. School gets out the middle of June, they go back in the end of August. And I'm not saying, and I told you, Tim, when we talked, that I took a trip down to Bank of New Hampshire Pavilion and caught a Noah Khan concert, drove three and a half hours down, caught a three hour show, drove three and a half hours back. It was an experience, it was excellent. There's definitely, in talking to people, an openness for this, but there's also again, some apprehension and I think we need to be mindful that we are within a population density. And I want to be noted to the fact that you, you spoke a little bit about decibel levels at the community night engagement, where there's only so low you can go before you're having a quiet concert. I think it was what you, what you had said. So I'm hopeful there's a way that we can make this work for everyone. Would love to see, and I acknowledge the fact that you are a destination of up to eleven thousand people. But you're also right surrounded by neighborhoods everywhere you turn. And so we need to be mindful of that. It would also be nice to have a showstop somewhere between Manchester and Montreal. I cannot deny that. So I don't, I don't have the answers for that. I am a little apprehensive going beyond this December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven deadline where they have agreed to pay the city an amount that increases two percent every year. But I think that we should probably look at that again somewhere down the line.
Amber?
Just want to piggyback on Marcus's comment. Tim, do you know if there's ever been any, like, study, I don't know what the right word is for it, but done to, to look at the issue of dampening some of the sound into the neighborhoods?
Someone who's here with me is Dave Westler, who is the person who the, the city contracts with to monitor the sound during the shows. And Dave, David predates me, I've been a twelve years, he was here when we first created the sound agreement. And I, I think there's been informal conversations around that, Amber, but I don't think a formal study about dampening the sound.
Okay. So these are, these are sort of like, you know, gauging your interest. And again, none of these questions or comments need to be dealt with tonight. They're just sort of things that I've been thinking about or talked to other people about. I think for the, for the increase, and especially for shows over five thousand, and that, that number sort of comes from our public safety folks. We'd, we'd probably ask that the rear gates, two A gates, both be used and staffed for entry and exit to take the pressure off Pearl Street, especially for shows over five. We haven't talked about this as a group, so that's just a thought, like for you all to consider. What would the impact of that be? Because I understand, right, that staffing takes cost.
Well, let me jump in there. It's really not that, we do that already for shows, that, that gate, when we call it Gate E out towards Colchester. We opened, we had it open this weekend for the Renaissance Fair. There's really no staffing, we're not charging for, for concerts, we're not charging for parking. So we, we open those gates up and we encourage people. We email ticket buyers in advance saying, please arrive early, please notice this. You know, we combat with a GPS, especially people that don't know where, know the area, they go to one oh five Pearl Street. But we have the ability and we do it now to email ticket buyers, hey, please note, there's a Gate E that's open with a map to it to hopefully, you know, spread the demand.
Another concern that came, came back from public safety was the number of shows in EMS impact. I mean, one, one thing I'm concerned about is sapping the ability of, of local EMS to, to staff regular shifts. And I frankly, wouldn't want any of these waivers to be taken. So Essex Rescue, for instance, in St. Mike's, you know, is there a written plan? Has there been a conversation with them? What's the agreement? What's the staffing going to be so that it's not pulling shifts even two days later? Because there were so many shifts working these shows X many times a week or a month. Right now, Essex Rescue is having trouble with staffing and so we wouldn't, that's, that's something we want to see the impact from. Response from them, I think, or I would.
Yeah, no, I can certainly give more information. I will say, we have our own first response team that staffs all of our shows. So Essex Rescue does not, with the exception of motorsports during the fair, so three events that they help. But Essex Rescue, or we have our own first response staff. And then of course, if someone's transported, they would call for an ambulance, but our, we have our own first response staff.
Yeah, and I think the concern was just the, the natural reaction of, I'm trying to find, the natural reaction of making sure they're staffed enough.
Okay.
To be available. We'll sap them, so we'd, we'd be, I would like to see kind of how that's going to be handled and what that conversation's been like with them. And we've talked about the weeknights. Curious with the sound agreement we already have, folks brought it up at the community forum and it's come up in conversations in letters we've gotten, but what's your openness to kind of revisiting that? Folks were talking about, you know, well, can they go quieter during the week? And we're not talking like quiet concert, like was brought up earlier. But you know, are they willing to go to like seventy-eight or eighty decibels during the weeknights when school's in session? And I understand from your, what you said tonight and from the forum, that that could be a limiter. You know, they look at your specs when they pick the shows, but you know, is that a conversation that fairgrounds feels like is, is out there?
I mean, I'm certainly open to the conversation, I'd want to talk more to, you know, get feedback from some music agents. Say, hey, if we did this, what would that mean? Cause I, I can't answer that myself there, but the anecdotal feedback I've heard, you know, not scientific at all, is that boy, if you turn it down too much, they simply will pass up on our offer.
Yeah, and I mean, part of the context for this is we're adding, I think, over a hundred and twenty apartment units right outside your property over the next eighteen months. They're either in process and construction or in permitting and potential senior housing across the street. And that corridor, this corridor is going to be kind of targeted for future housing growth potentially. And so a new normal, we're just trying to balance that. You know, if this is a new normal, how does that jive with the fact that people are going to be living even closer or as close as they do on Grandview or, or the apartments condos right over there, which name I can never remember. You know, that, that really increases exposure. And it's not like a midway show, you know, those, right, these, these are going to be louder and aimed right at them. So I'm just trying to figure out, you know, that's kind of what we're, part of what we're concerned about, or I'm concerned about, you know, balancing that.
No, and I certainly appreciate, if I could at-
And, and from a traffic point of view as well. I mean, I've, I, you know, I think I've serious memories about trying to make daycare on time on a concert night and failing. You know, and not being able to kind of get through where I needed to get through. And that's kind of where the number of concerts per week or per month, or if they're all concentrated too much, that's where that thought process comes. Cause you know, people want to show up at the show and get the, get their chair in the front. And that's usually, you know, being in line at three or four for a good show. And that really impacts the two quarters, but basically the one quarter or two quarters people have to come in here. So anyway, sorry.
Understood. If I could clarify one, David, the impact that, cause you mentioned that with, the way the sound goes, the impact a grandstand show versus a midway, as I understand it, grandstand show has less of an impact on the western border?
If you don't mind, thank you, Annie.
David Westler.
Thanks for, thanks for coming up.
Yep. The impact and most of the shows that I've done in the midway, the western property, western side of the property, they are the ones that get the biggest impact from the midway shows. The grandstand events are typically, we have, most of the ones that I do are during the fair. So you've got all the fair noise that kind of elevates the whole background noise of it. They typically are not as loud on the east and west property lines where the neighborhoods are. I would have to go back and look at like the Neil Young show in twenty sixteen, the Phish Benefit Show in, after Irene, and then there's the Noah Khan show coming up this fall. All grandstand events, oh, and they, well, the Elton John show, but that was, that was-
They could hear that in Milton.
That was, that was actually the loudest show I ever monitored.
But no complaints, right?
No, but they still, you still got a violation. So as far from anecdotally, without reviewing any of the data, I would say that the, the grandstand events have less of an impact on the east and west property lines. My boss actually happens to, I have a regular job besides this, but my boss, he lives in the neighborhood south, down near south somewhere, somewhere in there. He complains about the grandstand events, so that neighborhood may get affected.
Well, this is the strip I'm talking about, so the east and west I'm very familiar with. But now we're talking about adding housing on Pearl Street. More, more units, like right, basically, now I realize this is going to bounce back, we, I don't, I'm not a sound engineer and I can pretend. But the, the speaker units are, some of that's going to bounce back off the grandstand, but a lot of it's going to go past.
Right. Although I have done some spot monitoring during the fair, during the concerts out along Pearl Street, and it's been very low, you know, but that's at below the grandstand at the property line. So, you know, the, the neighborhoods may be impacted a bit more.
Just trying to get a sense of, that's, that's kind of, kind of what we're up against, you know, taking in more, more density and then, not that, not that one wouldn't expect that when they move in next to a facility like that. You know, there's also that, right? And there's also, you're now living in a dense Vermont urban community, have trouble calling it urban. Vermont urban community, and that's sort of an expectation, so just understanding that, but I'm just, that's a, that's one of the issues. Anybody else?
I think I just want to reinforce and come back to again, your point on, on this where I, I think, again, any discussion we can have around sound mitigation, whatever that looks like, I think would really help this discussion. I, you know, again, I've dealt with a fair amount of audio in my career, so I, I get the challenge. So, but I think it's one of the ways that we can, we can make an impact. But I think there's some simple ways, not necessarily the cheapest ways, but there's some simple ways to, through landscaping and other, other effects that can mitigate that sound, make this a very nice and wonderful space and continue to be a beautiful space for any act to play. So I hope that we can continue that dialogue and figure out how we can work together to do those kinds of things. Cause I think this does bring positive impact to the community. Believe me, I have had, I'm, I love going to concerts and I have seen a fair number of them at the, at CVE and I love it. And I have, remember going to a lot of shows through Higher Ground, right? So having that ability to hopefully attract more to this region would be great. Cause I do a fair amount of driving to spec and down to Union and a number of others because of the fact that, you know, the names that come here versus the names that go elsewhere. the names that come here versus the names that go elsewhere, right? But I, I too am concerned about, again, where the housing is going and of course, even those, the longstanding communities that are already here and the impacts that, that's already, that it's already having, or at least, you know, again, I think some of that can also be helped with some understanding around this a little bit more. Because, you know, again, it's also perspective, right? It's, I can show you a number and I know that, you know, at about 80 decibels, we're talking about like hairdryer level noise, right? So, but over a short period of time, it's not really much of an annoyance, you deal with it and you move on. But those numbers, again, it comes, it, sometimes it's not relatable for the public, so how we, how we, how, we gotta find ways to kind of relate them to this, to help them understand, I think. But anyway, as long as we keep the dialogue open, we hear more about what's going to happen with those improvements at CVE would really help us. Quick question, because you mentioned this earlier in your presentation. So just so I understand this correctly, the dirt track right now, where, you know, where the grandstand is, you're gonna cement that one over?
Yeah, that's the, that would be one of the components of the upgrades.
Where's the mud bogging gonna go?
I know, that was, we, that was the- I should have worked that into my presentation.
Where's that, where's the, where's the Suicide Eight and things like-
Yeah, 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 so no, great question, because that came up, because motorsports, which you're referring to, uh, are a big part of the fair. We do monster truck, figure eight racing and demo derby, and to some people, that is why they come to the fair. They're aren't going, they're not going away. We've, um, it's, it's not uncommon to do motorsports in arenas and they bring the dirt in.
Oh, yeah.
And then you move it out, and we would do the same thing. We've talked to the motorsport promoters and they said it's not an issue for them at all. Because that, you know, for the fair, motorsports is really the fabric of the fair. You know, the demo derby is a, you know, sells out every year. It's a fun night and we wouldn't, we wouldn't that, wouldn't want that to go away and it, and it won't under this.
I think about it because of the fact that I know it also attracts a consistent level of audience as well.
Yeah.
Much like you show, you know, again, a regular schedule of shows can do, so um, you know, just thinking about those impacts overall.
One, one more point I could about the, the track surface there from a guest experience, anyone who's been to a concert there and it's raining out, your ankle's even muddied, right? And you're, all of a sudden, you're paying 60 bucks for a concert, your chair literally sinks in the mud. That's not a place you want to go spend any, you know, quality time. So we feel that, that, that track surface alone would, again, enhance the guest experience tremendously. Not to mention what saves us on labor when dealing with the mud and all that type of fun stuff.
Can I ask?
Yes, absolutely.
This is potentially a really crazy idea, but just curious, um, if there's any kind of like temporary overhead cover, that would be very simple, not a structure, not a building, but almost like a super tarp that goes over like ice rinks or something. So the, just thinking about that, because you could potentially keep the dirt and use that infrastructure up on top over the whole thing instead. This is probably a crazy idea, just came to me.
No, no, it's not, because there's amphitheaters, pavilions with those types of roofs to them. We as an organization looked at something like that years ago before I was there, there's some fancy drawings done like that. You know, we could look at, at that again, I, I'm not sure the economics of something like that. When they looked at that renovation in 2007, it was about a $7 million investment in the grandstand with a roof and all that. And you're, the math doesn't work.
Yeah.
It just simply doesn't work. You can't charge enough for a ticket to pay that back.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we've probably exhausted. Amber, unless you have any other questions? I think next steps, um, this is just me thinking out loud. For the board is we'll have to kind of have some time to think about this and schedule another time at another meeting, hopefully the next one or very next one after that. And, and really try to get some answers from questions, you know, giving you some stuff to think about. I think what I've heard a lot from people is, you know, we don't want consecutive nights. We'd like to figure out the school issue, um, school night issue and and I don't know what that looks like, so if you have any creative ideas on how you can make this work and sort of, you know, does it, is it July and August that they're packed into and people just deal with it? Um, I don't know, that doesn't sound like it works for you. We'd probably want some kind of note on this that says there, there just won't be consecutive nights. I don't know what this means if you get a, if you're approached with a festival, like a multi-day music festival. You know, we haven't really talked about what that means and the impact of that. We haven't asked stakeholders like Public Safety and others and but that kind of thing. But I think we will try to get this done as quickly as possible. Cause I think, you know, realizing that you're not going to actually add the shows until you get the grandstand done. It sounds like, or are you planning on adding some, like they might be midway, they might just kind of put up-
No, as far as any type of investment in the grandstand, we wouldn't do anything until we receive the additional, it's just too much of a risk for us.
And for me, there's the overall question too of just the permanence of this. I mean, I don't think any of us, I mean, right now, the waivers are based on a multi-year agreement.
Yeah.
That's only four years long. So I don't know that we would make this the permanent, because we haven't talked about it, the permanent, um, beyond that agreement minimum. I mean, it's very likely, or it's likely it could be adding to this agreement until the agreement expires. And so I don't know what that means for the Fairgrounds, because, you know, that's all we did with this agreement. And when we did the extras over COVID, we only did it for one year. So I don't know what it, what the feeling is in the community or in the board for just saying, from here on out, it will be a flat 35. Yeah.
Can I, can I ask a question in, in reference to that though? Because I don't know if CVE would be open to, again, you know, in addressing the, the existing agreement. And knowing the fact that, you know, we, I'm hearing it too, that um, you know, the limitation is the current agreement in some respects. Would CVE be open to potentially readdressing that agreement? Drafting up a new one that would go either for another four years or for some other term in order to solidify this? Because again, I can see, I can foresee the fact that if we say, that, look, we're, we're, we're okay with this, but only through the end of this agreement, that would bring potential question marks for you as to whether or not this is worthwhile, because you don't have agreement beyond that, so.
My gut feel is you'd have to rewrite that existing document there.
We're, please don't interrupt. Yeah, I think that's what we're getting at, you know, and I don't. Our plan for capacity in terms of what staff and board planned on doing and had the capacity to do was to do that in a year, two years from now.
Yeah.
So we also have to weigh the, the time it would take, because if we were going to redo that agreement, we'd probably want to have a fresh look at how we're doing the sound and how we're doing all, like it's incredibly complex agreement, the way it's done right now. And probably overly so. So I think the bottom line is we'll try to schedule a follow-up conversation of this as soon as possible. And with the hope of kind of keeping the conversation going and making sure we can get an answer quickly for you.
Thank you. Should I reply to those questions prior to, or do you want to send me the question? What's the pleasure of the group?
I think we can summarize the questions and get them over to you and if you want to get back, that'd be great.
Okay. That'd be great.
Great.
I mean, I mean, all in all, I think we all think this is an exciting opportunity. I think it's just the details, we just got to figure out how to balance it all.
No question, I mean, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I understand the complexity of this and I just thank the time of the city council and staff for giving us the opportunity to chat about it here tonight. And we'll do what we can to respond quickly with questions. If we have, host another community forum, whatever we get, whatever we have to do.
Okay. I know there's people that want to talk about this, I know there's at least one hand raised online, so we'll start. So if you could stick around for a second, sorry.
Sorry, one quick sec, quick question, I just wanted, Amber did have her hand up, I think, at some point, but it, just wanted to try that.
It was just going to be a friendly reminder about public comment, because it seemed like he was moving on.
Okay.
So it's all good.
I remembered.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. You're supposed to do that on the download too. You're supposed to just-
That was a download.
We, go, go for it, we might, we might ask you a question during this. Okay, great, okay.
Or you can-
No, if you don't mind staying there, because we might have, we might ask you, um, if someone brings something up, we might have a detail that only you know. So, sorry about, so we're going to take public questions, these questions should be addressed to, to me, not to Tim directly. And if there's something that we can follow up with Tim on to get an answer to that, we'll try. We'll also try to answer your question this evening, if there is a question, if not, we'll take your information and get back to you. We'll start with Steve Eustace online.
Hey there, Steve Eustace, I live over on Wilkinson Drive. And I know, I think it would be helpful, and I agree, these are all good things to think about, um, and opportunities. But I think we have to think about, why did we put a noise policy in place in the first and way back? And the purpose was because people were feeling like there was a lot of, um, you know, events or noise, loud concerts and things, and we wanted to have a sense of, you know, things being constrained in some fashion. And then, you know, and it made sense to have waivers for things like the, the weekly, you know, the fair at the end of the summer and things like that. And it just, for me to just hear that, oh, well, we're going to go from 20 to 35 waivers and anytime the fair wants to do something, we just give them a waiver. It feels like, why do we even have a noise policy? If we're, if we're gonna not use it that many times. And so I think it would be just, like, just to go back on, why do we have this and, and what are the effects? And the other thing is, I understand that at some times, you're going to have louder events and you need to, and you certainly need a waiver. Can we have concerts that aren't so loud? And I'm not saying quiet concerts, but the people going to the concerts, like, I can't go to a concert without wearing hearing protection because it's so loud. Cutting it down to where it's not dangerous for people at the concert, for health reasons, to hear the music that loud. It doesn't have to be quiet, it just doesn't have to be like blown on eardrums. And I know people often talk about the borders of the property. I often cannot hear the music on Pearl Street, say I'm walking back from the fair. You get to West Street and the music is much louder. In my neighborhood, um, especially the north end of my neighborhood by Hayden, north end of Wilkinson, the music gets quite loud and to have this so many days of the year, I think it's an effect on people. If we're going to go something like this, again, it felt like so much of the presentation was all the wonderful things the fair does. And, you know, obviously the need for the extra revenue, but like, I, I would love to hear a whole list of mitigations and not just all of us coming up with the mitigations. You know, it shouldn't be just us coming up with the mitigations. And I think things like a communications plan, I know a couple times in the last year or two, there's been a post on Front Porch Forum by the Fairgrounds to say, hey, we've got this big event coming, letting people know. We shouldn't all have to be trolling the Fairgrounds website to find out when these big events are coming, especially if they're so frequent. So that when you're trying to make that daycare run or these other things, like you, you don't come out of the house and it's like, oh, oh my goodness, what happened to all this traffic? Why are, you know, I think a communications plan on Front Porch Forum or some of the city news items that get sent out, like, I think those are like mandatory to educate people so that they can work their lives around things. And if we know there's going to be some loud concert and if that's really a problem, you can leave town. Another thing, I love the ideas on just try to mitigate the sound some way with trees, other things, like let's try everything we can that is reasonable cost. We, I know the school kids are the most important when we talk about, you know, weeknights and things like that, but adults got to work early in the morning too. So just because, you know, these concerts often go till 11:00 PM or something and people sometimes got to be at work at seven in the morning. And so they don't, you know, granted, there can be an occasional type of thing, but if we're talking, it sounded like, geez, we're going to have an extra 15, 20 concerts and they're probably going to be during the week, because that's when we can find the bigger concerts. That's a lot of midweek concerts that are going to disrupt people, you know, trying to be rested for work and things like that. It's, when it's not an exception, it sounds like this becomes like, you know, quote, the new normal, whereas, you know, three out of four weeks, you're dealing with a big, a big concert event. And, you know, if you just spread your 35 over that, you know, four or five month period. And I think we just really need to think about the community and I know the board, the council's thinking about all these different things, but I think we have to look long and hard. And I think there's, you know, a benefit with the exposition, but we really have to weigh the negative. And if the benefit does not outweigh the negative, we can say no. And I, and so I think there needs to be a lot of evaluation here on, I think we just can't jump forward because, oh, there's some benefit or it's a good benefit. If there, there could be a lot more negative, so I, and it sounds like the board, the council's considering these things. And I would encourage a slow process, because this is such a big thing, I know you're not making a decision tonight and, you know, I hope it's not like one meeting later, we're done. I think there needs to be a collection of data, we work through some mitigation, share that with the community, how does this sound? It can't, you know, I'd like it to be, you know, the five council members aren't making the decision in a vacuum. You know, and obviously people comment at meetings and stuff, but like, let's actually focus on gathering public input support this. Does that make, any questions on any of that? I talked a lot.
No, that makes sense to me, Steve, thanks, I appreciate that. And it's an interesting point you made, because I have noticed that as well around how, not, not a sound engineer, but definitely experienced what you, what you mentioned about walking home from the fair and all of a sudden turning a quarter for, you know, half a mile or a mile away and being able to hear the concert four times as loud as I could on Pearl Street, you know, and so I, I get that. It's odd, I don't, but. Anyway, thank you, is there, I don't see any other hands on Zoom, is that, Steve, are you?
Risa does have her hand up.
Risa, okay.
Yep.
We're going to stay online, just one more, just one more, uh, Risa, how are you?
Okay, thank you. I'm Risa Merritt, I live in Countryside and I hear every concert with my air conditioning on, with my windows closed, over my own TV and my own music. I do not live near the Fairgrounds, I'm about as far as you can get and still be in Essex Junction. There are some benefits to this, I can understand that. However, as a resident, as somebody who chose to live in this community, I should not be inconvenienced that I need to leave my home because of noise. The first time I called the police over the noise from a concert, they asked me to lower my TV, they couldn't hear me. I said I was calling about the music. And they said, is this a neighbor? I said, it's the fairground. The very polite police officer said to me, ma'am, I can't help you if you're at the Fairgrounds. I said, I'm not, I live at Countryside and I gave him my address. And they said, we're sending a car to get the decibel letter, the levels, you don't need to walk out. I did walk out anyway. And before he even clicked the meter, he said, I know this is way too hot. I mean, it was, it was overwhelmingly loud. I love concerts, I've probably been to more concerts than L of you combined. However, when you're talking about what this is going to mean to traffic, what this is going to mean to noise, what this is going to mean to, as Steve said, not only kids who need to get up for school, but people who need to wake up for work. This is, I, I hear a lot of, well, what can we do to make this happen for you? I'm not hearing a lot of, what can we do Essex Junction to make it more palatable for you? I look at that agreement, I see, you know, back in 2018, they gave us $15,000 out of the kindness of their hearts. It's now up to- they gave us $15,000 out of the kindness of their hearts. It's now up to 15,600, give or take, with a 2% increase, which is less than my property tax increase each year, percentage-wise and number-wise. So, you know, there's 133 acres there that they're claiming they have so much agricultural that we don't even notice, and they're not paying taxes. They are not being good neighbors. There are times that they are. There are times that they do a lot for the community, absolutely. But on a day-to-day basis, I guarantee you, my noise has never disturbed CVE. Their noise disturbs me every year. You know, I, I, I'm so glad that you're not making a decision today. I think that this really has to be reviewed thoroughly. I'm very concerned about this being an open-ended, well, we can't pay for this and then not have this forever. When I first moved to Vermont, you know, the, the fair was, what, two or three days? It's now quote-unquote "the 10 best days of summer." And I've gotta tell you, as an Essex Junction resident, we don't get a discount. We don't get any benefit. We get a whole lot of traffic and a whole lot of noise. So yes, I think it's great that all that CVE does for cancer care and that they did with the, with COVID, and they do for Girls on the Run, and they do for all of these other shows. What is it that we are getting from this, other than we don't have to travel to Albany to go to a concert? No, we don't have to. All I'll have to do is open my windows. The very first council meeting I ever attended was back when Deb Billedeau was the chair. That gives you an idea of how long ago it was. And I went to talk about the fair and how the noise was overwhelming. You know, and here it is, almost 20 years later, and we're talking about adding 15 more noise waivers. So please, you know, we have this strategic plan, work going on. We have all of these things that we want public input from. This is a really important one. Thank you.
Thank you, Risa. Was, yeah, I understand a lot of your points and appreciate it.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Risa, if you don't mind, if you recall when you, when the police came to your house and used a meter, do you remember what that number was?
I honestly don't, Marcus.
Okay.
I, it, it, it was so immaterial. It was like, as I was standing out there, talking to him, all I kept thinking is, I'm hurting my hearing. It was so loud.
Understood. Thank you.
I mean, it is an interesting concept. Two people have brought that up, and I thought about this. And a few residents asked me, this concept of being able to hear these in different ways in different parts of the city, but we only measure at the property line. Is Noah Khan a grandstand show?
Uh, no, midway along.
I mean, it'd be, not for tonight. We're already running pretty late. I think it'd be an interesting follow-up conversation to have about, especially if we reopen that agreement, what does that look like around the city? Like, what, what is a realistic expectation? And I mean, you know, it's just something to think about. I'm not saying we absolutely have to talk about this. I think it's a real, a real thing. It's, I'm gonna guess, we're gonna be told by sound experts that it's unpredictable. So that would make it very difficult, but I'm just putting that out there because we've heard it twice right now. I've heard it from other people. I don't know what we do with that, but I want to acknowledge it. Just looking back online, Annie Cooper. If you could, yeah, come on up, since you're in the room.
Okay, no, sit. Come on up, Annie. All right. Hi, Annie Cooper. I attended virtually Tim's presentation at CVE. And I appreciate, I didn't understand at all, and I'm sorry that I didn't. I now understand that your presentation is, here's what we want to invest in fixing, and not just fixing, but reinvigorating and making great. But we can't invest unless we, I, I didn't understand that, and so I was confused. Regina, I don't know if you can pull up the agreement, because I think people should lay eyes on it. I just linked it to you, if you don't mind. But I think it's an absolute.
There's a link in the packet.
The 2023 one?
Yep.
Uh, sorry. Oh, it's in the packet. I think it's an absolute that that has to be, that has to be what this is. This has to be redone. You can't, you know what I mean? You can't put, it has to be redone. And I think that, I think that the quirk of the fact that we have CVE in the middle of our community is a piece of who we are. And I don't think that we can discard it. And I don't think that we can discard what Risa and Steve are saying either, right? So how, what, how, what is that, the conundrum is quite a thing. And I think that agreement is where you hammer that out, right? And where you put in stone that ticket sales absolutely have to, that the financial policy lives inside of that, right? And I think that 35 days we're talking about now? 35 concerts? Is that the final number? 35 is 9.58% of 365 days. 9.58% is not a lot. So 35 days out of 365 is not a lot. What do we do? How do we find that balance, right? We got Noah. How do you say his last name? God forbid, help me that this is now in video. Noah Kane?
Noah Khan.
Khan. I mean, people are losing their minds over this. We're gonna, we're gonna not have Noah. That's crazy. So we need to be this place. We need to bring, it brings in money. It brings in people. And what do we get out of it? Do we get better ticket prices for Essex Junction residents? Or free if we all go to Risa's? Just kidding. You know, what, what do we get out of it? What, what is it that residents want that help them tolerate the parts that they really don't like? I would say ticket prices. I would say fair ticket prices. I would say, like, fi- find that out and really put that in there and be, be clear with each other and don't be afraid to get clear. And hammer out something that's a compromise that's really real, and I don't think we can ever back up from it. We can't, talk about an elephant in the room. CVE lives in the middle of us. You know what I mean? I don't think we can be like, 35 this year, 10 next year. You know what I mean? I think, I think it has to have longevity. I'm not saying sign a 30-year contract, but I'm saying I don't think we can go, go four years later and say, okay, now we're going back to 17. So I think, I, I would personally love to embrace this, the, the way that we all got joyful when Tim started talking about the mud and the dirt, and everyone just started leaning into that. There's joy in this, right? And how do we find the joy? And how do we make it joyful for people who are frustrated about that? Thank you for your time and your consideration of my thoughts.
Thanks, Annie. I just want to point out, too, it's 35 in five months, so it's about 25%. Not that I'm trying to correct you, but I just want people to have the context. We're talking about a four, five-month period. So it's, it's not material change necessarily, but I just want to make sure people get, like, it's a shorter portion of the year. Unfortunately, we have winter.
I appreciate that. And I, I did intend to have two more sentences onto that. I got nervous because I felt like I was already talking too much. So I appreciate your percentage calling out because, yes, it's true that we have a limited amount of time that we all want to be outdoors or indoors or expending our time in that way, in that, in that season. I was just talking about the, the bigger thing. But agreed, 100% that the, that the season is rough in that way because it's condensed. And I appreciate you pointing that out.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Sir, in the, in the third row, I, I feel like I'm supposed to know your name, and I'm embarrassed that I don't. Sorry. Chris, that's right. Come on up. Sorry. Do you mind sitting right there with Tim?
Nope. Of course, I talk often.
Just introduce yourself, if you don't mind.
So I live on Prospect Street.
I'm sorry, could you just give us your name for the?
Oh, Chris Chacoin.
Thank you.
Yes. I live on Prospect Street. I look, my house looks down on the grandstand. I've been to every concert since the fair started holding concerts. And I've never been in the grandstand. And, you know, I've got a whole bunch of things that have come out that rang my chimes during this discussion. And I'll put my thoughts together and send it to the council so that we can get home. A couple of things that are key, I think, is, you know, why do we have a noise ordinance in the first place? And it is to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare. So when you decide to give waivers for that, you are making a business decision to the detriment of the general welfare. It's simple as that. And, you know, money talks, and I understand that's hard to walk away from. But I also understand, as you mentioned, with the new houses, well, they should have some expectation of what noise they're getting from the fair. When I moved into my house, as Risa said, what was it? Three days, then it went to five days, and there were no sound waivers. I had an expectation. And then we came up with this whole waiver process. Blew my expectation away. Kind of gotten a new expectation. And now you want to do it again. Like you say, it's 25% of the days that I can spend outside, that I can eat on my porch, go have, you know, have people over, and, you know, it's just, it's not right.
I understand.
Thanks, thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Diane.
Diane Clements, there have been a lot of excellent points. And I whole, who hardly agree with Risa and, and Steve who presented beforehand. And yes, sound travels in a sine wave, for those who forget physics from high school and college, which is why things are louder in wherever that sine wave touches down. So now imagine that you're also trying to sleep on your second-floor bedroom, where the trees don't block things because the trees aren't that high yet. And yeah, you've gotta be at work at 7:00, and the fair goes until 1:00 in the morning. We're not there anymore, but we were. Okay.
Not anymore.
Not anymore. And by the way, school days, school night is Sunday through Thursday. Because if anybody remembers, you're doing your homework on Sunday afternoon, so it must be a school day. School day. Okay. Anyhow, getting back to some more practical matters, you've gotten a lot of good inputs. So I'm gonna make my comment is about two things. One is, land development code has Sections 514 and 515. It deals with disturbing grounds. So should the fair decide to put in that pavement, besides EMS support pieces and all this stuff that you talked about, there is the piece about making alterations to ground for, and that this would fall into that, so they'd need to, oh, gosh, permit. Okay. The other part is, is that should the council agree with CVE's request, the council should request CVE provide traffic control and monitoring on Pearl Street and 2A for its four gates. Besides the potential for increasing the sound level, is the potential for increased car traffic on our trunk routes. Many of past concerts' start times require patrons to arrive during our, quote, "rush hours," which clogs our roads even more. So, yeah, making daycare, well, yeah, I mean, that happened. Okay, so I, and I have no problem with them starting earlier. Which means also they're only gonna go until 10. But it does kind of whack up with the daily traffic, which are on our trunk routes, which includes Park Street, too. But, you know, they don't have gates on Park Street, but it does whack things all the way out to who gosh knows where, and it's already bad enough going into Wall Street. So anyhow, I did just want to have that reminder, you know, that it's, you know, there's this traffic piece, too, and I wish everybody a pleasant night's sleep.
Thanks, Diane. Is there anyone else in the room that has a, George?
Yeah, can I sit here?
We need the mic.
Oh, you need a mic.
Yeah, sorry.
So I hope you find a way. I'm George Tyler, Acorn Circle, Countryside. I urge you to try to work with CVE to make, make this work. I think that we need to keep in mind, they're a nonprofit organization ultimately. They have limited capacity and limited means for evolving, unlike a profit-making business that might be able to take out loans and other things like that. I don't think they would be coming to you. I think Tim understands, and he's, he gets it, how tough a decision is from, this is for you, hearing from people, how much it can be disturbing to some people. Other people, I hear the concert music all the time. It doesn't bother me, but I appreciate the fact that some people, it really does bother. But you have to also think, in my view, how is CVE going to evolve? And how is that economic, that, that piece, as, as Tim said, that, that anchors your Pearl Street Economic Development Zone? How are they going to evolve? This is important for them. They have been wanting to repair that grandstand since, I, for year, many, many years. And they see this as an opportunity for going forward with it. So I would really, and I, I think you can look at taxes and what they contribute in local option tax and what other businesses contribute in local option tax. I don't think you, I think it would take a lot of work to really do a comprehensive and accurate economic development or economic impact study from what, what CVE actually brings to the community. And I'm not aware that that's been done, other than beyond the anecdotal level. But I also think you have to consider the overall cultural piece. As someone said, it, you can like what you hear or not like what you hear depending on what kind of music it is. It's, could be country music. I think I can remember, and, and you weren't here, but David Lee Roth, I remember that well. And we all felt like resigning, and I think the entire village staff felt like staying home, with David Lee Roth staying up until 1:00 in the morning with lots of profanity at many, many decibel levels. But that never happened again. And I think we put safeguards in place that would, and certainly, David Lee Roth will never be invited back here again. Right, no. But I, I do urge you to work with them. I think we've always found a way to work with them. I think this is an important piece of their evolution as a business. And I am glad. I thought the presentation was good. I think that they do a lot for the community. I appreciate, and I'm sensitive to the fact that many people are disturbed by it. And I know this is a tough situation for you guys to be in. I appreciate it, but I think just, there's a good way to work this out. Thanks.
Thanks, George. Is there anyone else in the room that has anything they want to add to this conversation before, Kristen? Yes, second visit.
So as a fellow Prospect Street resident, so I'm right in the backyard as well, I just wanted to get on record that I really appreciate what Risa said. And I would love to, in, as you're considering making this decision, I would really like to see, it'd be great to see the expo come to the council with a list of things, like, a list of the mitigations that you're thinking of doing. And also, other ways that you can help the community, especially the people in those immediate neighborhoods who do endure the most noise and music. I would say, sometimes it's music, sometimes it's noise. But it would be nice to see, like, just an offering of what you could, I mean, I don't know if this is possible, but like, has it ever been, why don't Essex Junction residents get discounted fair tickets?
Presale codes, presale codes.
Do, do we get those?
No, no, darn it.
Because I was like, am I missing this?
I had to, I mean, I had to do a lottery for no.
I mean, I feel like we should get, there should be a, there should be a discount or there should be something for the residents. And, and just like a, a list of things that the expo has said, here are the things that we're gonna try, you know, in the present. You know, in the presentation that you gave, which was great, it'd be great to see another slide that had, here are the things that we're working on, that we're doing to, if we are going to get this, if we got the, the sound waivers, this is what we would do before we implemented the new shows. And we would have all these things in place. So that would be nice to see. I also think that Steve Eustace, I think this is a really big question and decision. And I, it really does need more input from the community because you don't know it affects you until it affects you. And when you're in it and it's like, oh my gosh, how did this happen? And other times, you know, I'll just comment on the Elton John, like that particular show, I could hear perfectly clear, sitting on my back deck where I didn't have to pay for a ticket and I actually liked that. So I mean, sometimes it does work, sometimes it does work in your favor, but there is a lot of times and if there, I do feel the anxiety of living so close to the expo, which I love for many reasons. Also the anxiety of thinking about having that, having more shows. Who knows from what they're, what those shows are and what that would mean. And also, living in Vermont in those couple of months that we have, that we all love, that you actually want to have your windows open and you want to have the, the air coming through your house is so short. So we have such a short time of things that we all enjoy, that we have to kind of work on all of those pieces together.
Thanks Kristen. I think, you know, I can say that from the windows open point of view, I'm four, five streets away from your west fence line. But we don't open the windows for 10, 12, 15 days of, best 15 days of summer because the house gets filled with dust. You know, like, like figuring out how this impacts every different people. And just bringing it back to the council because it looks like folks are finished with the public comment part. I've been trying, we've heard a lot about like making, trying to find a way to engage the public. And our board discussed last September using a decision-making tool and a rubric for when and how, what decisions, what the level of the decision is and what the level of engagement then. It's a tested tool, it's sort of one we adopted. And I, I think maybe the next time we talk about this, we should go back, I can send out when that was, but we should go back and look at that, Tim, it was before you were on the board. And think about, you know, is this, does this decision, what is this, you know, very low to very high? What is the anticipated level of conflict, opportunity, controversy or concern? How significant are the potential impacts to the public? How much do major stakeholders care about this issue and so on? And based on sort of those results is kind of how we take this. Now, I think, I think it's worth, you know, revisiting that conversation from September and saying, you know, where does this fall on that spectrum and what, what's our committed expectation for that in terms of community engagement? And, you know, to Tim, I mean, that could mean that this takes a bit. But I think for us, we keep going back and forth with the questions and the answers and gathering information and trying to communicate throughout that process and make sure that we're, we're keeping that process rolling. Because that will also inform how we, how, how we answer the community and how we engage. So I still think it's an exciting opportunity, but I also understand it's clearly concerning for some people. And I know you all get that. So yeah, any other thoughts from?
No, thank you for bringing that, that up though, because it probably would behoove us. And again, I do want to thank the expo for putting together a community forum and trying to engage the, the conversation with the community ahead of this particular conversation. It did stir up a lot of conversation in the community, we saw that, we've heard it. So I appreciate the fact that you did that particular outreach, but in having brought up that conversation around the rubric, this might be one of those opportunities where a public hearing kind of setting where we're both at the table, hearing, you know, and again, promoting and, and encouraging people to come in and share thoughts and, and have that engagement might be a good addition to this process, yeah.
Regina, do you have any thoughts on any of this? Off the top, I know you're typing away like crazy. Your mind is turning, I can tell.
Yeah, I'll, I'll keep it to myself, but lots of ideas from the conversation.
Okay.
Have we exhausted the public to be heard?
I think we have. So this is not an action item for this evening, so if there isn't any more public comment, I think we'll move on. Thank you all for joining us. Our next order of business is an executive session, two executive sessions. So thanks again for taking the time tonight. Thank you, Tim. I'm going to find that motion. Oh no, I'm sorry. I didn't see, I didn't see you raise your hand or anything. We can, we can, you can speak. Go ahead. Absolutely, yeah, just, please don't, please, please come up. I didn't realize, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's totally fine. I could be a lot louder. I love the idea of Essex Junction, oh, sorry. So Elise Serta, Essex Junction resident on Hiawatha Avenue. And I think the expo, I love the expo too. My concern is the West Street traffic that happens. Once there's, you know, packed Pearl Street, people come through our neighborhood to get around the expo traffic. We see, we already have a problem with speeding cars going down there a lot. And then when we have even more traffic either from construction or from the expo, it comes down west and it comes right past our house. And it's not so much, it's annoying, but it's unsafe a lot of times because we have so many kids riding bikes and a lot of pedestrians and so on. So I would really like to see the expo, I, I'm not opposed to giving more events and, and concerts. My concern is, a lot of times when we go to expo events, they don't have all the entrance and exits, exits open. So people don't have alternative ways of getting in, they go in through that main entrance. So I'd love to see the expo have a plan for, I don't know, they know their business better than I do, but if it's a certain amount of traffic expected or attendance, they have to open up more than one in and out. I think that might relieve some of the congestion and also having assistance with directing that traffic. I don't know what triggers that for the expo or if that's something in their agreement with the city. But I'd really like to understand how, I don't want to say no to events. I'd like to see that they just have ways to move that flow around. Especially when we have emergency vehicles going through the Pearl Street. We have a lot of people zooming in and out of that. And I'd like to, not to always default to going down West Street. Because we already are just challenged with that. But my last piece is just to totally support the idea of UVM and Champlain College actually make a huge effort for the events that they have, their neighbors, to give them incentives to be, hey, we understand this is an inconvenience. They give them free tickets to events. UVM does that specifically around, you can go see a Catamount game. And neighbors within a certain radius get to have that benefit. I don't know if it's full for Essex Junction, but even a discount or a Lotto for tickets, I think would go a long way within the community to just say, hey, we get, we're trying to be good neighbors. I don't have a problem with them being bad neighbors, but I think that would go a long way in the community to getting them the support that they need to make this a more positive experience for the community, so.
Understood.
Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you very much. And sorry to not recognize you earlier.
No, because I went like.
I mean, I recognized you, but I didn't, I didn't catch that you were trying to.
No, no, it's totally fine.
Can I, can I say something, it just spurred on a thought for me, and I'll just bring this up, that maybe the expo might want to communicate with Colchester because of the idea that I'm, I'm about to mention. Because one of the things, and, and I think Tim talked a little bit about the entrances in his presentation, and I recognize the fact that I think most people don't think of the other entrances that often, but signage along that main drive coming in before you get to Susie Wilson could help maybe direct some of that traffic to some of those other entrances. And we don't have necessarily great signage around the area either to direct people or, you know, again, I think, give them the alternative idea.
Yeah, yeah, it's complex, right? Because, yeah, yeah. No, I think that's something that will be. I think they're open to that evolution. And I think it would probably have to be an evolution to see what works and what doesn't. Okay, all right, I'm going to find that executive session memo. Oh, look, I found it. Regina, are we ready? Do you think?
I'm ready.
Thought we had like consent agenda and stuff.
Oh, sorry.
Amber said that.
I remembered public to be heard, okay?
I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you some kudos there.
It was a trade-off today.
Second.
Yeah.
Amber motion for to approve the consent agenda. I seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Council member comments and manager report.
I've got some.
Okay.
Early absentee ballots for the August 13th primary are available in the clerk's office. Voters may request to have a ballot mailed to them or they may come in and vote in person. Each voter will be given three ballots that can only vote on one. All three ballots must be returned for the vote to count. Instructions will be provided. So this is a primary, so it's a little more complex. Municipal offices, so we, here at 2 Lincoln, we will be closed on July 8th and 9th. We will be moving over to still the 2 Lincoln building, but over in the space that's closest to the fire station. So that's where folks can come to do all their city business. Yep, I think that's all I needed to say about that. Traffic impacts this week, been pretty intense around the Crescent Connector project. We certainly understand that and are working to try to get through these big lifts on both Park Street and Maple Street quickly so we can try to get the project done. That's not to say it's going to be done in a couple of weeks, but this has been a big effort and really appreciate the patience of folks in dealing with the backups. Tomorrow, there will be a police officer in addition helping the, the flow on Park Street because we will be really working on the paving between the intersection, Five Corners intersection and back to the project start. So lots of hands on deck tomorrow to help alleviate those issues. I think that's it.
Great. Anything from board members? No?
I will simply share that at the last meeting, the city council approved the block party on the top of Hiawatha. Again, I invited the council to come, I continue to have that invite open. The weather looks questionable though, this Saturday. This, yeah, Saturday evening, six to nine, I believe. But the weather is questionable at this point. There is a rain out date, but in case counselors did want to attend, feel free to reach out to me because I am in communication with the person who is running that particular event. So I can let you know if, for whatever reason, they choose to reschedule.
And, and that jogged in memory, the police department has announced that their national night out is Tuesday, August 6th. It'll be in the parking lot of the high school as it traditionally is from five to seven. It's a great event. Come on out and the fire department will be there, the police will be there. I'm sure there'll be representatives from the city in there. It's a free ice cream, it's a great time. So I'll keep reminding you of it, but it has been announced for Tuesday night, August 6th.
Thank you.
Hot dogs too.
Yes. Who's going to be on the grill?
I was last year, I haven't had the ask yet, but I, it was very fun and I'd be very happy to do it again.
So you've got it claimed, really? And we have the Fire Department Life Saving Awards this next Monday.
July 8th.
July 8th.
Yes.
At the Fire Department. And I know three of us are attending, at least.
At least four of you are attending.
Oh, four, okay, great.
And so that is an excellent point to make. Because of that, there will be a quorum, there will be an agenda posted, but there is no city act, no city council action of any kind, other than observing and honoring these folks for the awards that they're getting.
Great, I don't have anything else. Amber, anything? No, okay. All right, and so now, without further ado, I will move that the city council make the specific finding, the premature disclosure of contractual matters would place the city at a substantial disadvantage. And I move the city council enter an executive session to discuss a contract pursuant to 1 VSA, section 313A1A, to include the city council and city manager and city HR director.
Yes.
Yes, I will second.
Excellent. Further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All is unanimous, I saw a thumbs up from Elaine Haney. There we go, unanimous, thank you. Great, we're in executive session. We do not plan to come out and make any announcements, so we will adjourn from the executive session.
You've got to also make the motion for the committee members. That is way up on page three. Page four.
Before the end of the night.
And do you need to, do we need to come back and announce those committee members or?
We have not in the past.
Okay, that's fine.
Yes.
It's 9:30 at night, so I don't know these things.
There have been times when we have.
Yeah, we should do that.
Come back out and announce them?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to correct myself and say that we will be back soon. The city council is back in session and we are ready to make some committee appointments. So I will make those motions. I make the motion that we appoint Elena Judicious and Scott McCormick to the planning commission, Karen Dolan to the capital committee, Kristin Gilde to the development review board, and David Ashay and Lauren Philbrook to the bike walk advisory committee.
I'll second that motion.
Elaine, second. Great, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Great, motion passes unanimously, thank you. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, we are adjourned.
I think you need a second, sorry, on that adjournment.
All second.
Amber seconds, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Great, thank you, we are adjourned. Appreciate it.